Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Let me call to order the meeting of Mayor Mac Planning Board for January 22nd. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to be sure to sign in on the clipboard that's on the front table here and make sure the microphone's turned on and you speak clearly into them so the folks at home can hear you. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position for Mike Redding, who's not here. Our next planning board meeting after tonight will be February 5th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in this room. If anybody is interested in a discussion of the Wired Barn proposal, they've withdrawn that, so there won't be any hearing on that item today. And with that, we are at the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Kelly, good to have you here with us. Any report?
None today.
Are there any questions by members of the board for staff? Excellent. We'll be moving right along. It was my intention, if the folks were here from Underwood Engineers in the Mayor Mac Village District, to move them up on the agenda, but I'm not sure they're here. Okay, we'll leave them where they are on the agenda then, and go on to item...I guess I read into the record, the Wired Barn one, even though it's been withdrawn. It's on the agenda as a continued review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver, a full site plan review for a change of use to allow a dog boarding and daycare business in addition to the existing residential dwelling. The parcels located at 3 Wire Road in the C2 General Commercial Flood Hazard Conservation and Aquifer Conservation District, Tax Map 2B, Lot 293-1. And as it's been withdrawn by the applicant, no voter or acknowledgement by the board is required. Item 4 on our agenda is Strife LLC, continued, as the applicant and owner, continued review for acceptance and consideration of an amendment to the previously approved residential site plan entitled "Overlook Estates," to revise the previously approved off-site improvements by allowing excavation of material and installation of water and sewer services on Map 5D4, Lot 99. The parcels located at 406 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, Tax Map 5D4, Lot 99. And this is continued from our December 18th meeting. Kelly, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Since the last meeting, the applicant has submitted revised plans based on the board's comments and from staff's perspective, they have addressed the majority of the comments. So I'll let them go ahead with their presentation.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. And thank you, and before I turn the floor over to you, I do want to say that after our last meeting, I noticed a couple of occasions where you guys were out there sweeping and cleaning and responding to some of the complaints that we've had. Although I'm interested in knowing more about the couple of pits that are dug on the side of the road, I wanted to give you a pat on the back for responding to those concerns and getting some of that stuff taken care of. So thank you for that. And with that, please introduce yourself for the record and tell us where we stand. Brett, touch your microphone again.
Yep, we're good to go. Brent Cole with Keach Nordstrom Associates, accompanied tonight by Connor Beaut, the applicant, as well as Steve Helvatsis from CSSI, who is the contractor on site. So last time we were here, we got some action items from you guys, and I hope tonight we can address all your concerns. The first, and I think the most important one, was the erosion control issues out there. So I went and contacted the contractor, the applicant, as well as Robert and Dawn from the town. They went out immediately and did a site inspection and found no issues with the erosion control out there. Dawn asked them to supplement the construction exit a little bit, but noticed that there was sweeping going on. And from this point forward, they have been issuing their inspections every single week. And I don't feel like I've driven by a few times. I think all the erosion control measures are up. There aren't a ton proposed on the plan because the entire site almost concaves in on itself. There isn't a lot of flow actually leaving the site. That happens today, and in our design, we kept the drainage patterns the same. So the entire site actually holds the 100-year storm. So there's really not a lot of erosion to actually leave the site. So that's why you may not see a ton of erosion control or different types of... The contractor is here tonight, like I said, so after my presentation, if you guys have questions for him about ongoing activities, he'll be here to answer them. We also left seeking a geotechnical letter for the steep slope that we're proposing. We received that letter from GSI, a reputable geotech around New Hampshire. He basically reiterated the stuff that we have already on the plan. The jute matting, the hydro seeding, those type of things that you'd see typically on a two-to-one slope. His basically report was analyzing the sand to make sure that everything was stable once we reconstruct that steep slope. We left, and the long-term maintenance of the slope, you guys wanted that added to our full maintenance log of all the BMPs that are on the site, so I added that. I resubmitted the revised long-term maintenance logs. I did reach out to AOT. Michael Schlosser did want to see the plans and make sure there was no increase in storm water from going from woods to grass and see, checking whether the post-development would now exceed the pre-development. We submitted those drainage calculations as well as an amendment, and that was approved today. So I do have that permit in hand. With that permit, I did have to go to the Sauhegan River Committee. I met with Mr. Disco last Thursday. They had no issues. They reiterated the same to AOT, so we're clear there. And that's about it. That's all I have. I know Mr. Best had brought up the holes, and I will prob...the hole is out on the new lot. I believe they're relative to Eversource, but I'll let Connor, the applicant, address that.
Hello, I'm Connor Beaut, manager for Strife LLC. Yes, those two holes out front are for Eversource. They were wanting to do some test pits, and those will be future pole locations. The goal was for them to come in and set new poles to start the realignment process, but with winter storms, they've been delayed.
Okay, so, thanks for the explanation of why they're there. My concern is that they're relatively close to the road and they're fairly deep, and obviously it's dark there. I'd hate to see someone wander off the edge of the road, either in their vehicle or on foot. I mean, how far are they off the road? They really...they seem close when you grow by quickly, but maybe they're further away than I imagine them are.
Yeah, so they're...where the future road will be lower is why they're where they are. I believe they're about 30 feet off of the road.
Okay. Certainly look a little bit closer when I was driving by them, when I saw it. Can you undertake some kind of barrier or flagging or something to mark them or protect them?
Yeah, last time, they were all flagged out. But yeah, we can, I can look into getting a permanent barrier or fill them back in.
I mean, certainly not...well, if you fill them back in until the...I mean, because it doesn't take long to dig them out again if they were coming there to do the site and you can dig all that soil away anyway.
Yep.
I've just, it just seems a little bit of a hazard to have them there. How deep are they? They look kind of...
One of them's fairly deep because that's exactly where the road will be cut way down there. So one of them is about 20, 20 feet deep.
Holy moly, yeah. You gotta do something to protect that, I think, if it's 20 feet deep.
But I think, Mr. Chairman, I might contradict you. I think the film in is a bit, it seems to me a bit pointless speaking, just from point of view, time and motion. I would have thought some stakes with some yellow tape or something like that, ideally with a couple of lights at night or oil lamps at night would be all you need. I would hate to see...
So those were staked with tape? I don't know if this...
They're not there today.
I understand that. It's probably the weather has lowered and buried the yellow tape around the staking.
Yep. So approach it the way that you think is appropriate from a safety standpoint, whether you think that putting barriers and some visibility...
Yeah, I believe at this point, we will just have them filled in because of the storm season and Eversource probably not getting to them. And if, whenever they do, again, as you stated, it's a quick dig to get them open again.
That's, I mean, I just want to be safe, and I know that, you know, I'm thinking from the mindset of a, you know, 12-year-old boy or 10-year-old, they're gonna, the idea of playing in an eight-foot, 10-foot, 12-foot-deep hole, I mean, that's, seems like a good place to go play. It's like a lot of fun. Not so, not so safe, but kids don't always think that way, and I'd hate to have something like that happen.
Understood, yep.
Someone hurt themselves on it. Other than that, I don't have any questions about any of the updated information that you have. I think that you did a pretty good job of complying with what we asked.
Just an aside, Dawn did let me know at the end of the day today, she signed off on the utility pole location, so I'm not, not sure how that affects the timeline of them being installed, but they have been approved by Dawn as far as the location of the poles.
I guess that'd be a little more interesting if there was a pole at the bottom of the 20-foot hole, coming out through the top of it and filling in and burying it halfway up and then digging it out again. Seems a little complicated, but somehow deal with the safety issue of having, you know, what kids could play with or goof around with. Other members of the board have questions or comments on anything to do with the proposal? Nelson?
Yeah, I just want to thank the applicant for doing the things we asked for on this site. My concerns had to do with the stability of the slope on the new lot, and I think that that's been answered as best we can with today's technology. So I'm satisfied with this site, Mr. Chairman. I'm satisfied with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. Any other comments or questions? All right. Just because it's on the agenda here, let's at least offer up the opportunity for any abutters or citizens to weigh in who might be interested. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. There are no waivers requested. It doesn't require acceptance because it's amendment, so if the board, if it's the will of the board, it's appropriate now to consider a motion that would conclude the review of the application one way or another. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board, that we grant conditional final approval to the application with the following conditions: to be completed within six months, as based on the letter of January the 17th, 2019, from Kelly Chamel.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second by Nelson. I don't think that we need to add a condition dealing with these open pits. I think that you'll deal with them appropriately and responsibly, as far as I'm concerned. If there's any further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay, so that is three to two to one, the motion passes. So you have your approval for your amended project. All set. Thank you guys for coming in. Did you get all the counts? Neil and Dan said no, and Tom said he abstained. Okay, item five on our agenda is Mark Rivet, as the applicant and owner, continued review for consideration of a site plan for the construction of a 1,920-square-foot garage and function room addition and associated site improvements. The parcels are located at 425 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation, Flood Hazard Conservation, Elderly Housing, and Town Center Overlay Districts, Tax Map 5D4, Lot 77 and 78. The item is continued from September, October, November, December, and January meetings. Kelly, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just that the board should probably discuss any waivers that may be necessary, particularly lighting and landscaping. Just have a discussion about if you think it's appropriate to have a formal waiver request or if, if not, just because none was provided in the application, even though it's a site plan.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly. So Chad and Mark, although we know you well, please introduce yourself for the record and tell us what's going on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board for the record, Chad Brannan, civil engineer with Fieldstone Lane Consultants, representing Mark Rivet and FPL LLC this evening with their continued discussion for a site plan approval to allow for the addition off the backside of the existing funeral home on parcel 5D-4-77, as well as the construction of a parking area on Tax Map parcel 5D4-78. As the board may recall, we were last before you on December 18th. At that time, we formally presented the plan, and we had received an engineering review from Fussin O'Neill. Since that time, we have worked through those review comments. We made revisions to the plans, and we did submit revised plans to staff and all the departments for review. We also made some revisions to the plans to address some comments from board members from the December 18th meeting. I think one of the major revisions to the plan had to do with adding a barrier along the perimeter of the proposed parking area. That was certainly one of the comments that were raised. And then there were some questions as to how we were going to handle snow storage, so we formally added that to the plans as well. We have had a chance to review staff's recommended conditions of approval. We have no objections to any of their recommendations. We did receive a state shoreline permit for this project for the construction of the parking area within the shoreline protection zone, so we have to add some notes to the plans associated with that. And I did just receive a review from DPW today. I understand they reviewed our revised plans. There's a few outstanding drainage comments that I think we actually did address with the engineering review, but we just have to get together with Dawn and kind of walk through some of the details and make sure she's happy. We have no objections to any of her comments as well. As it pertains to the, the items in the staff memo related to the lighting and landscaping plan, when we initially submitted this application, we didn't submit a lighting and landscaping plan because the majority of the site is developed. What we're proposing is a smaller, is, not a small, but proposing an addition off the rear of the existing funeral home, and then we're proposing the construction of a parking area at the rear of Tax Map parcel 5D4-76. There is no necessary buffering to adjacent properties. There's already some existing landscaping out in front of the funeral home, so we didn't actually believe that that was applicable. But if the board does feel that it is, I do, I did come prepared this evening with a formal waiver request that we'd be happy to submit if, if need be, but we definitely looked for the board's feedback on that. And I think in our review with staff up to this time, and also our review with Fussin O'Neill, there was kind of that implication that, you know, it's an existing site. It's very, the site's quite developed. In fact, the majority of the site is building and parking to service the funeral home, so there's only really landscaped area along Daniel Webster Highway, which consists of, you know, lawn area. There's some accent lighting and then some shrubs along the front of the building. So that's something that we need to address this evening and get a determination one way or another. And the same really goes for the lighting plan. We're not proposing really any changes to the parking areas on the funeral home property, so we're just looking to maintain all of the existing lighting. Essentially, the lighting on that site consists of building-mounted lights as well as some, I would say decorative lighting, but it's, it's, there's granite posts out there with lantern-style lighting, you know, in the parking area along the front of the building. And then with that new parking area, there will be building, you know, the existing building-mounted lights will provide for, you know, the light for people to ultimately travel over to the funeral home and function area. We were not proposing any formal pole-mounted lights out there. It's really kind of an overflow parking area, but that's certainly open for discussion. So we didn't think that was necessarily applicable, but I did come this evening with a waiver request if the board feels that we should address it formally in that fashion.
Okay. So I understand what your point of view is with respect to the landscaping and lighting plan. I could share with you a different point of view. With respect to the landscaping, I think you're absolutely right, that it's a well-developed site, and a lot of this stuff is already here, and the things that you're doing are kind of in the back, not really visible from the street. But I would say that in a, in a very thoroughly developed site, that's precisely the place where you would want to see a landscaping plan, to make sure that there's still some elements of landscaping that remain. Although, because your development's in the back, I think that that does kind of diminish the need to look at what you're doing with landscaping. Maybe I'm not completely convinced yet. On the lighting plan, it seems that it's going to be pretty far to the back of the parking lot there from those buildings, to expect wall pack lighting to really have some influence that far out. Won't that be a very dark parking lot? And either way, without a lighting plan, how can we tell?
I mean, the parking lot would be, you know, wouldn't be formally lit, so it would be fairly dark in the far extents of the parking area, but it's just not something that, you know, we were planning, or client was planning on doing, was, you know, putting together a formal lighting plan for this parking lot. It's essentially, you know, an overflow parking area that probably would primarily be used, you know, during daytime hours, but certainly could be used at night. It's just not, you know, we see on a lot of sites where parking areas tend to be overlit, in our opinion, and if you have building-mounted lights and you're, and people are walking towards, you know, lights, this isn't a commercial parking lot where people are buying merchandise and going, you know, back to their car, where there would really be a, you know, what we would consider a safety hazard. It's a, you know, a funeral home and then a function room, so it's, it's a very low intense use as far as we're concerned, and, you know, we think it would be a suitable site, at the very least for a waiver, what it sounds like, Mr. Chairman, as you may be leaning towards that there would need to be some kind of formal action, but...
Well, I guess I want to talk it through with you, because with the lighting, there's kind of two parts to the answer. If you had a lighting plan that would show me how many candle power is going to be out here in the lot, we could look at it and say, oh, well, there's, you know, one or .1 or whatever, and what does that mean? How dark is that? You know, we could have that discussion, and then maybe you could convince us that it was lit enough or not lit enough. And if it, if we had that discussion and we said, well, it seems pretty dark, why don't you install a light or two? That might be the outcome of that discussion as well. And so, without having the plan that we can analyze, I don't even know that we can have the discussion about whether it seems like it ought to be enough, or we can't really tell, or maybe there ought to be more, or because this is a little different than some other spaces, yeah, let's, it'd be good, or no, it wouldn't. You know what I mean?
Well, it sounds like we, we can in fact install some lighting in the back end of that parking area, because that's going to be the area that, you know, would, would be challenged for light, for sure.
What are you thinking about in terms of possibility? I know that you're answering the question on the fly, so it's a little tough.
I think on the backside, the, kind of the radio parking along the backside where we're showing the snow storage. I think we'd probably...
John, is that what you're saying is up there?
That's correct.
You're going to put some pole-mounted lights with the necessary shutters to ensure the light goes down?
Yeah, it would be fully downcast night sky compliant.
Well, I think it's absolutely essential, to be brutally frank and honest with you. I mean, I wouldn't want anybody to be walking out there in the depths of December, January, with snow on the ground, somebody slip. I think you're maniac, not manic, absolutely mad not to put it in. Sorry. And you would never get, I would be voting against any waiver, all right?
So I think if you...
Well, thanks for being clear.
Sorry?
Thanks for being clear.
Oh, good. I tried to be.
Maybe there's two parts to that answer, though, because if you, if you said, okay, we'll put, you know, three lights here, here, and here, I think I could live without the lighting plan that analyzes the candle power effect of that and just accept the idea that you've agreed to install a couple of lights out there in some locations. So that saves you the engineering work, but I want the light, I want the lights more than I want the piece of paper that shows me all, all the analysis of it. Does that make sense?
That, that's fine.
And I don't know if my, my colleagues agree with me and...
110%, Mr. Chairman.
So then maybe we would be able to do a waiver if we had a commitment to install, I don't know, what are we talking about, two or three?
I'd say probably three of them.
Three lights out there along the outer perimeter?
Yeah.
Somewhere like about there, there, and there.
That's where it looks at.
Okay. So if you're comfortable with that, I'm certainly comfortable with that. With the landscaping, I mean, you're pretty much leaving what you had before wherever you could. I don't see any new additions of landscaping, but they're certainly not taking much away from what was already there. Where the build, where the new addition is going to go, is that paved area today, or is that grass area, or kind of a combination of both?
It's a little bit of a combination. So this area, this area right here is paved, and then there's actually a kind of a temporary shelter here that'll be removed. And then this is kind of a sloped, this is a walkout basement in the back on the, on the west side of the funeral home. So this is a sloped grass area here that'll, you know, be removed with the construction of the addition. And we are handling all of the additional impervious area by infiltrating the stormwater runoff site. And that was part of the approval through the state, and it's also part of the, you know, remaining comments that we have to address with DPW. There's just a few comments that she has relative to the drainage.
Well, based on the nature of the business and the nature of the project that you're going to develop, and the fact that you, you keep your site attractive as it is today when you go there, you, you need to have it be attractive for the business that you're in. I think that I could be comfortable with the waiver of the landscaping plan, but I'm only one voice. What do you guys think?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you on the landscaping. However, what worries me is reading the letter that was submitted on January the 17th from Robert Price. The one item that worries me is in the DPW's thing, 9G. And, and that worried me a little bit because it says the parking grade is 8%. The drainage will run past the leaching catch basins, which I entirely agree, it'll just tear past, then it'll go over the side and into the river. Now, I don't think that's what the spirit of the regulations is meant to do.
I thought that the applicant in his introduction today said that he'd gotten some changes that Dawn signed off on.
She hasn't formally signed off on them yet, but I would like to address that one.
Please, could you?
Yeah, the, the, the parking area is graded at 8% through this section, but there's a low point in the parking lot, parking area right here, where we have all these leaching catch basins. So these leaching basins are going to capture all of that stormwater runoff. The edge of the parking area is actually higher, so it's graded like a bowl down to those leaching basins. So there's no way that any of the stormwater runoff is going to go over the pavement and ultimately down that slope. In fact, the design is the contrary. I think what Ms. Twamala was referring to is just wanting to make sure that there was enough capacity with those infiltration basin grades to capture that runoff, and that's actually something that we addressed with the engineering review. So there, there's no issue with getting together with her and, you know, working on a solution. I mean, it may just be that, you know, she wants to see one of these basins located closer to that low, in that low area, another one, just from a security standpoint. But definitely the design intent in the design is that it's, all that runoff is going to be captured and, and invade to the infiltration basins below the parking area.
So that's entirely infiltration. What if those, what if those things don't operate to capacity?
We do have, we have a designed overflow pipe out of the infiltration basin, which goes to a headwall and a riprap apron off the edge of the parking area. But we have designed that through the, you know, the 50-year storm. It's a pretty small contributing area, because we're just capturing this area right here. And we did, again, go through the engineering review as well as the state review of the shoreline protection on that particular...
Thank you for explaining that because of the picture, the drawing doesn't make it clear, and certainly I just read the Dawn's comments, and I was thinking, oh my gee. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the explanation, and I'm glad that there is an outflow from the four leaching basins in the event that there is that much water, because I wouldn't want to see water impounded at the parking lot and then freezing in the winter and kind of deal with that. Other comments or questions by members of board? of deal with that. Other comments or questions by members of board? Nelson?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm not a hundred percent sure that we've got a full review of this infiltration system, based on my discussions with Dawn, which was earlier in the week. At that time, she hadn't yet been convinced, as, as you're saying, that she's, that this is going to be an adequate catchment system, an infiltration system, that it's going to work. And I just wonder, you said this was also part of the peer review, and the peer review has reviewed this as well?
That's correct.
And they don't have any issue with the proximity of those infiltration basins one to the other. It seems to me as you move infiltration basins closer and closer together, you begin to lose some of their benefit. You've got four of them piled right up there, and, you know, they don't have the same infiltrating capacity as they would if they were a standalone basin as an individual. Is that not correct?
Well, when we, when we modeled, you know, exfiltration out of that, we're ultimately modeling the surface area along the perimeter of the basin, so, you know, we're not putting them right on top of each other, and the, the site has been designed to meet, you know, the local, your local regulations, and in fact, the state regulations. So I think Dawn's only concern, and it was a concern that was raised in the engineering review, is just making sure that the placement of those is such that we're definitely going to capture, you know, all of that runoff, and you're not going to have, you know, any sheet flow on an eight, on an eight percent grade. She makes it sound like that eight percent grade continues, when in reality, it ends at a low spot where we're, where we're locating these infiltration basins. So there's no way that the, the stormwater runoff can go by the basin, because that, the infiltration, the, the rim of that infiltration basin is the lowest part of that parking lot, so everything is going to end there. But I think, and with all due respect, I haven't had an opportunity to meet with her. I did try to review her letter, but I received it today. You know, with the remaining comments, I thought that in submitting some additional information with the, the engineering review submitted, we may have addressed some of these concerns. But what I am committing and sharing with the board is that I know that by sitting down with Dawn, we can come up with a solution to her concerns. It's not a big issue. And I know that because the design is there, it's just a matter of maybe tweaking the location of those infiltration basins to her liking. She may want another one, you know, located on the other, and just, for example, what I'm referring to, is this is the low spot here. This is the area that she's concerned that stormwater may go over the pavement. She may say, well, just take this one and put it here. And that'll alleviate my, you know, my concern, because you'll have another infiltration basin closer to the area that I think, you know, the stormwater may want to flow, when in reality, it's going to go to the low spot, which is right here. And we did check the capacity of the rim, the, the inlet grades, and they are adequate to accept the stormwater flow from this parking area. So we've gone through the exercise of checking a number of these items that have been raised as concerns through the engineering review, and now I can see they're still on Dawn's letter, so... I'm comfortable with working with her on her sign-off, as long as the, you know, the board obviously has to be comfortable with me doing that as well.
Well, it would have to be a condition in any...
Yeah, of course.
The other thing I'd like to ask about is the, the fence, that it looks like a temporary silt fence, I see, and then I see some little square things, and I guess, I guess that's a different kind of fence. What is the fence like that prevents people from running themselves into the river here?
If you read it, it's up there, it says right about there, Nelson, and I think you'll find it says timber guard, proposed timber guard rail or civil or equal.
Or equal.
It's there, and that runs all the way around. If I...
Is that the one with the X's in it, or is it the one with the squares?
That's the one with the squares.
It's not clear to me. It looks like it's the one with the X's in it is the timber guard rail.
Well...
And I was looking, what, what's the one with the squares?
I think you need to look at sheet three of six.
Uh, four.
Yes.
Sheet three, okay. And now, proposed timber, okay, now this time it's pointing at the one with the squares.
Well, it is, it's pointing at that one on the other sheet as well. There's just, there's another, there's a silt fence line that is in close proximity to it on sheet four, so I think that's what's creating some confusion. But also on sheet four, we, you know, we have the legend that shows what the different line types are on the left-hand side, so it shows timber guard rail, and it shows temporary silt fence.
Okay, now that's basically what, a timber post in the ground with a two-by-six or something connecting?
Yeah, and we added a, we added a construction...
Okay, there's a construction detail.
Do you have a construction detail in here? Because I was going to ask for one, but...
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, in the bottom left-hand corner.
Bottom left corner of sheet five. I got you.
It's a pretty standard guard rail for a parking area.
Okay, that's all the questions I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. Are the members of the board have questions?
I hate to belabor this drainage thing, but I'm sitting here trying to look at it, and finally got my camera to zoom in on that. That's a hundred and thirty-foot line that's going in between those leaching catch basins. Hundred and thirty-foot elevation, is that right? Hello?
Hundred and thirty-foot elevation, yes.
There's a line that loops around and goes through the middle of those?
Oh, the hundred, yeah, the one thirty contour, yes.
One thirty. And then the lower catch basin is at one twenty-nine, three?
One, one twenty, yeah, one twenty-nine, six.
Six, and the out, output edge of that is at one twenty-nine, nine, which is only three inches difference. But I can certainly understand if water's got any momentum coming down a slope, that it's going to go flying right over that three inch.
But it's, but it's graded as a bowl, and so it's going to make its way to that lower one. And it, I mean, we've, we've modeled it, it, it works. There's, in fact, there's, you know, there's no, there's no head elevation, there's no standing water, the infiltration basin's been sized to accept all that, that runoff. And I understand what you're saying, and I suspect that's, I suspect that one of, you know, one of these basins may end out being in there. Again, I just got Dawn's letter today, so I didn't know if that comment was going to go away, based on us providing some calculations for the, the grade capacity. But I, you know, we could raise the edge of that pavement, if that's a concern, and make, make it so that it's a half a foot or a foot. I mean, there's a lot of options as far as, you know, adjusting that elevation, but what we have designed works, and it functions properly.
And your simulations?
I think in the twenty years that I've been practicing as a civil engineer, I think it would work, too, so...
Okay. Because it, it, it looks like a bowl with a hole on one side that's going to let stuff slide out, which is...
No, it doesn't have a hole, it's still bold on this side, but it's not, it's not as exaggerated.
Right, literally, three inches.
But the stormwater's running to the basin, so if you look at the way the contours are shaped, it's, it's routing the stormwater to these basins. That's why these basins are placed in this location, because the, the contours pitch up, so it's, the stormwater is running internally towards those basins, based on the way the contour...
And when there's a heavy rain, there's, there's so much sheet water going across there that it's going to pile up there and...
Right, and it'll be in this area. That's correct.
And flow right across, is what Dawn is saying, and I'm agreeing. That, if you can convince her, fine, but it just, I'm having a hard time believing it, looking at this in the detail with, with this bowl having a wall missing.
Right, and like I said, we may end up with one of these basins, one of these leaching basins moving down here, and being at that same...
Or some kind of a burn on the outside edge.
I think elevating the edge of the pavement.
Or elevating the edge of the pavement, but all we're asking is to allow us to work with Dawn on finalizing those details.
Thank you, Tom. Other comments or questions?
And maybe we, maybe you went over this in previous ones, but if this is parking for people to come to your funeral home for either showings or a function or something, they're, they're just walking across the parking lot once they get settled. There's no, there's no pathways for people to take. They're just kind of milling around. I mean, I've, I've been there many times for visitations, and, and even today, it's a little bit difficult if you end up in the way back to get to the front with cars coming in and out and stuff like that. You're dodging vehicles and whatnot, and you're adding more parking back there with even less travel ways back into the building. Was that considered at all, or, I mean, or how to get people out of the parking lot or into the parking lot? I mean, you already expressed some lack of concern for lighting, and yet people are coming and going, at least during visitations and stuff. And so they're not always walking to the building, they're also walking away from the building.
Are you asking as far as access to the...
From the parking lot, especially from the back parking lot, how do they get into the building?
Well, part of the L shape that is, I'll say L shape.
Mark, make sure your microphone's turned on, bring it towards you.
As far as the, L, the, there's going, there's a stairway here that, again, we haven't been using in the recent years, because the back area of the...
Mark, I don't think that you got that microphone either where it's working, or maybe it's not turned on. Oh, there's a, there's a funky one over there? Okay. Pull that one in closer.
As far as the access to the, is part of the interior changes, which isn't part of this, is the, to the left of where it says five D, the lot number?
Yeah.
Okay. There's the area that says stone, and it shows a, there's a side entrance there. That was always used as just...
Correct.
Yep, on that. That was always used as just an emergency exit type of thing, but where we're changing, will be changing the interior, that that will be also an entry into the building also, that the public would be using at any given time, that it will be open at that point.
And, and you can get to that from this new back parking lot, walking along your exit lane there?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, other than walking all the way around the building.
There's also, there's also a stairway here.
I need your mic, sorry.
Sorry, thank you. There's also a stairway in this location here, where people could, could come up into the building there. So you don't have to walk all the way around, you know, and, and go into this entry here. So there are some improvements being made to the building to accept pedestrian traffic from all different sides of the building.
I like the additions that you're proposing to the building to have some more entrances. I think it would help if there was some pavement markings or something to show a pedestrian who parks in that new parking area, the quarter circle, to know where am I supposed to go from here? Am I supposed to walk across right here? Am I supposed to go on the north side of the building, I mean, on the west side of the building, or the east side of the building? You know, somehow direct me on what I should do if I parked back there and I've never been here.
Can they come across at the bottom part of this new area, behind your garage that's there?
Yep.
No, above the garage.
There's a retaining wall there, so there's a bit of a slope difference.
To the left of there.
Right here?
Where the new, but there, right there. Is there a way to go through there, or is that a retaining wall, or...
Across the parking lot on the funeral home site to get to the building.
Just, just this short section here is a retaining wall, just absorbing some grade through there.
So, no.
But you could come through here.
Through the parking spaces?
Yeah.
Or past the end of there. It, it just seems like there's, there isn't, like Bob was suggesting, not any direction for what to do once you get out of your car. If you know where you're going, I guess you wander your way over there, but just, just a thought.
Even more reason for having lighting.
Well, yeah, lighting will certainly help.
That's exactly what I was going after, was that we definitely needed lighting back there.
Oh, sure.
Lighting would certainly help. It would also, whether it's a pavement marking or some kind of a directional sign that says, you know, entrance over here.
I mean, where the parking areas, you know, and there again, I mean, even, even with our parking, that, again, to get people to use the existing back parking lot that we're, we do have. I actually have a four-by-four aluminum sign coming for funeral home parking and entrance and, and things like that, that I had already ordered. But as far as, like you say, signage where there's the, I'll say island, but the, where it's, I don't know, how do you explain it? This three R and the sixty-eight-foot R radius there, that...
This area right here.
Yeah, that area there. You know, we could put signs there, and we probably would, because to get people to know where to go, and, you know, where to enter.
Yep, that's exactly what I was thinking. That'd be great.
I mean, and usually with calling hours and things, there, I have someone out there, as far as an employee, out there guiding people where to go and things like that, so, you know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I mean, during, who would, if you can.
Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in on this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Tom, some of the things that you talked about, do you want to have the applicant commit to those things? Or we kind of, the discussion resolves the concerns, or...
I, I more wanted to just make sure it was brought to attention, and they're aware of it and concerned about it. I don't know that I need a commitment. I'm sure he's going to do thing, but he, whatever it takes to get his customers into his building and whatnot, be safe, but the concern about lighting and stuff kind of brought it all up and made me wonder.
Thank you, Tom. Chad, you mentioned that you're prepared to submit a formal request of the waiver for the lighting in the landscaping?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I did prepare waiver requests.
Let's have you turn that in, so we've got it in the file for the record, that you've made a formal request, and then the board can consider it. Do you have more copies, or just this one?
I do have one other copy.
All right, well, let me read it, then, if it's, there's not enough for everybody to do. Dear planning board, as agent for Mark Rivet Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLC, hereby request the following waivers from the Town Merrimack subdivision regulations regarding the above referenced project. Section ten regarding landscaping standards for non-residential site plans. Tax map parcel five D four seventy-seven is currently developed with Rivet Funeral Home and associated site improvements. The property is essentially entirely developed with parking and access roads that service the funeral home. The property is currently landscaped along DW Highway, the approximately eighteen feet of lawn area, with accent lighting and shrubbery located adjacent to the existing building. The proposed addition on the property will be located off the rear of the building and will not impact any landscaping. The proposed parking improvements on tax map parcel five D four seventy-eight will be situated behind tax map parcel five D four seventy-six, and will improve access to the subject properties. Given the existing improvements on the subject lots and the locations of the proposed improvements, we do not believe a formal landscaping plan is necessary for this project. It is our own opinion that requiring this information will result in an unnecessary financial hardship to our client. For these reasons, we respectfully request that the board grant a waiver from section ten of the regulations requiring a landscaping plan for this non-residential site plan review. The second waiver request is section eleven pertaining to outdoor lighting standards for non-residential site plans. Tax map parcel five D four seventy-seven is currently developed with Rivet Funeral Home and associated site improvements. The property is essentially entirely developed with parking and access roads that service the funeral home. Lighting on the property is currently provided by accent lighting, which consists of lights on top of granite posts on the property, along with building mounted lights. The proposed addition on the property will be located off the rear of the building and will not impact any lighting, as building mounted lights will be maintained in this area. The proposed parking improvements on tax map parcel five D four seventy-eight is not proposed to be formally lit, but building mounted lights on the funeral home building and the garage on parcel five D four seventy-six will provide ample lighting to help navigate people around the funeral, to the funeral home and proposed function room. Given the existing improvements on the subject lots and the location of the proposed improvements, along with the intensity of the proposed use, we do not believe a formal lighting plan is necessary for the project. It's our opinion that requiring this information will result in unnecessary financial hardship to our client. For these reasons, we respectfully request the board grant a waiver from section eleven of the regulations requiring a lighting plan for this non-residential site plan review. Now, in our discussion, we've modified that a little bit, where we're actually agreeing to add three lights along the perimeter of the outer, of the new parking lot, but still waiving the requirement for a lighting plan that responds to it, or at least potentially so. So that's the applicant's formal written request for those two waivers. Let's first take up... So, that's the applicant's formal written request for those two waivers. Let's first take up the request for the landscaping waiver. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the applicant a waiver of the, the need to provide a landscaping plan.
Based on?
Based on, oh, yes, here we go. Based on the strict conformity poses unnecessary hardship to the applicant and the waiver is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Nelson, sorry, Neil seconded the motion. Any discussion? All in favor of granting the waiver, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero to grant that waiver. What's the will of the board with respect to the lighting waiver with the modification discussed here tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant the waiver as requested by the applicant, subject to the addition of three site mounted lighting around the new parking area on the basis that the circumstances strict conformity poses an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Neil offers a second. Any discussion? Tom?
I just wanted to ask, you talked about wall mounted lights on your, your building and your addition. You're gonna put anything on the back of the, of your three-car garage as well, just to light up that other portion of the parking lot that's behind there or?
Yeah, we do show a proposed wall mounted light on both sides of the addition, on the east and west side, so that will, that area will be lit.
But the new parking lot won't necessarily receive a lot of light from there, right?
No, that's why it's having three new.
No, we're
I know.
Which garage, which garage you're?
Well, the three-car garage to the left and the other property, that one, yeah. Which is your property too, right?
Yeah. There is a light out here, but I think the reality is, is these three lights here.
Granted, I wouldn't want to take away from those three. I was just trying to understand if there was lighting on this other side where there's parking as well.
There is, there is lighting here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Nelson?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm not comfortable with, with wavering the lighting on this new lot. I think the lighting he has in the existing lots works pretty well, but I would like to see something other than our board sitting here tonight, kind of winging it on how many lights you need and where you'd ought to put them. I'm not comfortable with that and I would like to see some sort of a lighting plan that took, takes care of that new lot, that's, the new parking lot in the back.
Thank you, Nelson, for the comment. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the lighting that does go in is like downcast lighting and it won't affect
Yep, full cut off downcast.
Any light pollution to the surrounding area?
That's, that's correct, it would be.
It wasn't in the motion. I just want to make, make it clear that that's what we're talking about.
And we can, for the three, and if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
For the three lights that, that we're proposing, you know, currently on the backside of the parking, we can provide, you know, a point-by-point demonstration of those three lights. So I think if that helps address, you know, to make sure there's ample coverage in, in that parking area, we can produce, you know, that analysis for the, for that area. And we'd be happy to, you know, to make that a condition and provide that prior to sign off.
Yeah, I think that that makes sense. And that way, if you do your analysis and you decide that you want four instead of three, I mean, so the, the commitment tonight is at least three and then depending on whatever your analysis seems to indicate to you. And then there would be a indication of the light, lighting produced by those three lights in a plan form. And then whenever you've designed those lights, since you've got your wall mounted light detail in your detail sheets, put a detail of whatever the parking lot mounted thing would be.
Just one other thing, Mr. Chairman. This parking lot is for business use. It's for, to service, right, for the daily or evening, you know, evening things. Is there any plan to put them on that they'll shut off in the evenings or late at night? I mean, are they gonna be blaring all night long, these things that are just stay on? I know that, I see that the parking lot's right behind a couple of residents and if I were living there, I don't know that I'd want, you know, parking lights all night long. I don't know if there's, if that's a consideration or anything.
Typically, there's, there's a timer.
Well, typically, we turn them on when we have services and even with the lights on the funeral home that you've mentioned that are there. We basically, except for the pole mumps that we have out front, those are on a timer. But the ones out back, we manually turn on ourselves.
So you'd be shutting them off at night after services and whatnot and, okay. Again, just concerned about light pollution.
Absolutely.
It likes to be a note on the plan.
So Nelson's point is that, so the note would be that the lights would be manually operated, the new lights?
And they're only during required, only as, on an as-required basis. They're not on all night, every night. That's, that's the intent here.
Manually operated during business hours.
When there is a need.
When there is a need.
As needed, yeah.
As needed.
Okay. Other comments or questions? So the motion is to waive the lighting plan based on all of this discussion about the addition of new lights and a, a bit of a minor lighting plan related to the production of light from these three things, from these three potential lights. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of grant. Nelson, you have more?
Well, I just want to know what we're gonna get with this discussion, with what you just said. Are we gonna get a plan that shows us the intensity on this new property?
Not a full lighting plan, but the light produced by these three additional lights that they're talking about installing at the parking lot edge.
Well, I'm not sure how that differs from a full lighting plan on this lot.
Well, full lighting plan on the lot will cover the whole lot and they're talking about doing something that's focused on these three layers.
Nelson, it's a, it's a lighting plan for the little parking area, but not a total lighting plan for the whole project.
Yes, that's what you just said and I, I'm okay with that.
Good.
Is that in the motion?
I have included it in the motion to make it clear.
Yeah, that's what Chad committed to do. Further discussion?
Chad okay with that?
Is that with you? You happy with that, Chad?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, yes, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no further discussion on granting the waiver as laid out and discussed here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One opposed. Any abstaining? One abstaining. So that is four with, to one, one with Dan opposed and Nelson abstaining. So the waiver is granted. Would the board like to have continued discussion about the entire project or any part of it? I think that the discussion tonight about continuing to work with Dawn as a condition of approval to get her sign off on the drainage situation, if that's not already reflected in the staff's memo, which it probably is, since they're very thorough with those things, then it certainly ought to be an added condition. Is this already in the memo, Kelly?
Yes.
All right. Then we don't need to add anything with that. I don't remember any other discussion where we would be adding any conditions of approval to this based on our discussion here tonight, but if I, if you remember differently, please correct me. If not, is the board prepared to take final action on the application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant final approval for this project, subject to all the discussions and commitments made here this evening by the applicant and his agent. And again, including everything that's in the memo of January the seventeenth, twenty nineteen, submitted by Mr. Robert Price, the planning and zoning administrator.
Sir, a second for Alistair's motion?
Second.
Second by Tom Koenig. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero to grant conditional final approval. Pass this down to Kelly so she's
Yeah, I would be happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is item six. John Flatley Company as the applicant and Gilbert Crossing LLC and John Flatley as the owners, John J. Flatley as the owners. Review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved mixed-use development conditional use permit. The parcels are located at six four five, six seven three, six eight five, seven oh three, and seven oh seven, Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 industrial, Aqua Conservation and Wellhead Protection Districts. Tax map six E, lot three one, three three, three four, three five, and three six. This item is continued from our January eighth, twenty nineteen meeting. And at this point, I will again recuse myself from consideration of the item and pass the gavel to my vice chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's a metaphorical gavel, it's not a real one.
I realize that. Okay, gentlemen, when you are ready.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, Chad Brannan, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. With me tonight is Kevin Walker from the John J. Flatley Company. If you recall, we were before you last, at your last meeting, in fact, I believe, and we had discussed this project in some detail relative to the next phase of the development that we're proposing, which again, we have on the plan before you. And then the development agreement and some confusion relative to whether there needed to be a vehicular or pedestrian connection.
Could we clear that the word confusion is wrong? There is no confusion about the need for a road. Let's have that clear.
Okay. Well, it certainly was reflected differently in the development agreement, but
All right.
So with all due respect, that's the reason why I stated it that way. Since the last meeting, I know Mr. Walker did have an opportunity to meet with Captain Manuelli and they talked about some options relative to providing access to the residential portion of the site. We also reported back to Mr. Flatley relative to the discussions and there was an evaluation done on the costs for connecting, you know, with a vehicular access from the phase that we're proposing all the way out to the residential apartments, which are currently under construction. As you may recall, the, excuse me, the length that we're talking about is pretty considerable. The phase that we're currently proposing is this phase here and then that connection would run all the way through as such. I think that was, was it roughly twenty-three hundred linear feet of road, which would be required? And fortunately, when we reviewed this internally with Mr. Flatley, the, the vehicular portion of it is kind of a make or break for the project. We would be willing to do a pedestrian connection and we would be willing to address the fire department's concern relative to a secondary access to the residential component. That may be done in, you know, a variety of different ways as far as coming back out to Route Three here if it's necessary or Daniel Webster Highway, excuse me. But the vehicular connection, unfortunately, you know, it does compromise the project and I guess, you know, from my understanding and from meeting with Mr. Flatley and Mr. Walker, the, the situation really comes down to the number of tenants that we, that are currently committed to the project and that's a huge investment for the construction of a vehicular access for twenty-three hundred feet. So due to the number of tenants and interest that they currently have, they just can't encumber that additional charge. So we are here tonight to share that information and, you know, hopefully discuss what options may, you know, may be for the project moving forward or not. And certainly fill in if I've missed anything.
Just, just also as part of this project, and I don't think we stated it last time we were here, there's gonna be significant work done on DW Highway. We're gonna be adding three lanes to DW Highway. Heading to the north, be a left-hand turn into Webster Green. A right turn only into the site and then a throughway to keep Daniel Webster free and clear, to keep the traffic moving. And heading south, a left-hand turn only to turn into the site and a lane to continue through to the south. So we've, in addition to the cost of the project itself, we're gonna have significant costs with Route Three, the permitting with the New Hampshire DOT. We've gone over this in detail. We are really, want to get started on this, but this, this connection unfortunately is is breaking us, is kind of out of the make or break, it's the break unfortunately. We know we have to do the Route Three work, the DW Highway work. That's something we can't get out of. We think that's important for the traffic flow on DW Highway. Through the traffic study, the traffic study was done, looking at each of these sections, each of the new entrances off of DW Highway without any connection in between. They were looked at specifically as standalone type deals, not knowing what was gonna be going on in between. And the traffic level of service on DW Highway for the apartments anyway is negligible as far as increase or decrease. Certain times of day is actually an increase because we have the additional turn line and certain times of the day, it's, it remains the same or it's a couple of seconds slower. Nothing to write home about one way or the other. We want to keep this project going. We, we really do. We're just kind of stuck right now at the best way to go forward. We can, we can continue to say that we plan on continuing to go forward as this phase fills up. Maybe we do the next phase further south. Maybe it's the phase that's closest to the apartments. We could take the phase that's on the north end that we're talking about now. We could swap that and put that on the south side and you know, that would work a little bit better as far as what the board is looking for. But it takes away the ability to put in a possible big box. Now, is that ever gonna happen? I don't know. You never know. But on a site, that's the only place for a big box type building. So at this point in time, we'd like to just hold that for now. I think it'll be a big box. I'm thinking it's probably a long shot, but at this point in time, we just want to hold, hold our right to be able to have that there for something larger that may come along. But I can't stress to the board enough, we want to keep this project going. We want to keep moving. You know, we've, we've got work on DW Highway to do for the apartments, so it's gonna be done this spring, adding lanes. We're doing a waterline connection further south on DW Highway, connecting a sixteen-inch line to a twelve-inch line. We're gonna have an additional three lanes for this section if this moves forward. And again, it's all in the name of keeping the traffic flowing and I know that's, that's one of the concerns. But there's a breaking point for everyone and unfortunately, that's it. And in my, my opinion, and I think that of probably New Hampshire DOT and I would think most of the people on the board here, is to keep the traffic on DW Highway flowing as opposed to not being able to do that work. So I'm not sure what the board likes to do. This is, this is unfortunately where we are. You know, we've, we've put a lot of work into the apartments. We're gonna be putting a lot of work into this site, including improvements on DW Highway. The next entrance to be built on, on DW Highway further down in between the apartments. That's actually gonna be a signalized in the section at some point with additional turn lanes. So there's a lot of work that, that needs to be done for the entire project and this is one of the bigger portions of it. So I'm, I'm not sure where the board stands. It sounds like we're kind of butting heads over something that I don't think we necessarily need to, but, um, I'm hoping to listen to the board one more time before we make our decision on whether we go forward or not go forward.
Can I, can I offer my first tempest, and this is purely me? Your big box there Your big box there is put that way, but there are other ways of taking that big box in the parking, so you could in fact move it slightly to the, that, that way, which is the north, I think, yeah. Well, it's to the, more to the east, I think, move that down. I recall when we first started, there was talks of having the extension of the car park at the restaurant that's just up here as being, giving you the commercial incentive to put in the fifth, or the approval to put in the fifth apartment building, and I'm not saying that's going to change. But if you were to turn that through in some sort of, not 90 degrees, but just shift it down a bit, and I personally doubt you'll ever get a big, another big box in here, but that's another matter. You could very easily take this development and slot it in very nicely up here. It would enable you to have the development, it would enable you to have, only have to do the modifications of this area on DW Highway. It would give you the first commercial piece you're looking for, and it would enable you to finish the fifth apartment. That's me. I know that you, the commitment to build that road is, I understand, set in stone as far as the board is concerned and as far as the town's concerned. I think you have to come up with a novel, re-jigging that project, turn your big box slightly this way, negative 90 degrees. You could move your, your new development up in that top corner, and you, everybody would be happy. You wouldn't have to build a road at that point because the commercial bit that you've installed can be connected to the apartment entrance. There's my ten, 10 cents worth to try and unblock the blockage.
I think that's something we may be able to look at, but I can tell you that, I don't know if you can see the body of water up there, so.
I know there's a body of water.
And there's also, there's also a culvert that runs from that pond to the, down to the left, so we don't have, so we've got no room to move it north.
I'm, I'm not saying to move it. I, I can't really best describe it, but if you, if you take that.
Turn it clockwise a little bit.
And turn it anti-clockwise by approximately, I don't know, a bit over 90 degrees, it'll then be going fore and aft, if you like, across the road that way. You could then spread your parking down here a bit, and you'd have, still have room for parking, but you have now got your nice little building there in that nice triangular slot that's there. You have got them close to the apartments, which is what the road is supposed to do. So you wouldn't have to build the road, you could leave the rest of the road until you decide if there is a big box, and I have great doubts about big boxes in this part of the world anyway. You've lost the, the only one that showed any interest, they've gone into London, Larry. I think this would give you what you want. It would give you the first chunk of commercial, it would give you your fifth apartment, and everybody in the, in the area would all be clapping.
Do you, do you see the dark, the darker green on DW Highway in front of the big box? So that's a well one.
I understand that, but I, I just don't believe, there's, I, I, I find it hard to believe that there isn't some way with the great brains that you've got over there that you can't work out how to do it, following my idea. I'm not the, I'm not a professional surveyor and engineer and the rest of it. I don't know enough about it, but I've given this thing a lot of thought. I was disappointed when I first heard that the meeting that you had with John Manuelli fell down, fell down the hole in the intention of Mr. Flatley. I have been trying to find a solution for you. That is my solution. Over, I give it to the rest of my colleagues to see what they think. Mr. Disco, you're looking as though you want to say something. You want to probably tell me I'm an idiot, but go for it.
It's a tough act to follow there. The, I sort of heard you say that you and Mr. Manuelli had come to some sort of a discussion and conclusion on what he would accept for a temporary road, gravel road, if you want to call it that, et cetera, in pedestrian way. And is it your conclusion that that is too expensive? Is that the presentation that was made to Mr. Flatley that he's rejected, or was there some other proposition that Mr. Flatley's rejecting?
No, I mean, nothing's been rejected. It was, it was, it was looked at. It was a cost-wise item that was.
It was, well, it was.
But yeah, so, so me and Captain Manuelli, we spoke about a couple of things, connecting the site to the apartments, as we had talked about last time, with the gravel roadway. We'd also talked about not doing that whole connection and giving the fire department a secondary access somewhere else along the site, and not doing the connection between the retail and the apartments. And then, as we were talking, and we were both in agreement, that was something that the board wanted, was a connection between the retail and the apartments. So that's what I brought to Mr. Flatley.
Yeah.
In the interest of both the board and Captain Manuelli.
Okay.
I think we can still work with Captain Manuelli on a secondary type way in here, whether it's through the existing fire department or somewhere else along the site, but we were talking about connecting onto DW Highway somewhere else, not over to the retail development that we're talking about now. But that's, but that's the fire department. I know the board's got another.
Yeah.
Interest, and, and I understand that.
Well, I just wanted to understand what it was that was proposed and rejected, and I wanted to be clear on that.
It was not accepted. It wasn't rejected. It was just not accepted.
Okay.
Mr. Manuelli, please, I'd be delighted to have your input. Thank you, sir. And don't forget to sign in, John. We know who you are, but in due course, sign the piece of paper.
John Manuelli, Fire Marshal. Kevin Walker and I did sit down, we had a very, I thought, productive meeting. We looked at different options, and I guess the easiest way to describe it is to kind of give a quick history on, on our entire background of it. On any of these large, especially residential developments, we want a second means of egress and, and entrance for emergency purposes. All of the other ones in town have them, going back for 20-plus years. In this particular case, when I first looked at it, I was thinking possibly coming in off this side and connecting up, but we're landlocked. We've got, we'd have to knock down someone's house and do that. We didn't want to be doing that. We've got a railroad here, we can't really access it here. This is a separate parcel. If there was going to be a road here and stuff like that, we could have it connect up here, all right? All those were taken out. When they did the proposal with this road, that met our requirements, so, okay, that's what we want. Now they want to put this development here. We have no issue with this. Not a problem. It's the fifth apartment. So not looking at the CUP, not looking at the requirement for the connections, we would be satisfied with something coming off here and connecting up to Daniel Webster Highway in a remote location, not at the same entrance, but something in a remote location. That would satisfy the need for us. This could be a separate one with two ways in and out. That would satisfy the need for us. What it doesn't satisfy is the connection for the CUP. One of the proposals that Kevin suggested was connecting this up with the entrance to St. Obane and traveling across the entrance road to St. Obane. We did not like that because essentially, it's putting traffic directly across the front of the St. Obane, St. Obane building. We just felt that was a poor idea. I don't think St. Obane would be thrilled with it either, but that wouldn't work either. So that's where we are right now. To satisfy us, a simple, you know, if that's the will of the board, to separate these into two, as long as we have our emergency access, we would accept that for the fifth building. The other alternative is to build this completely separate, not build a fifth building, but that's our standpoint.
Thank you very, thank you very much. But what John just said does not meet the agreement of the CUP, and he's made that clear, and thank you for ma, thank you for making that clear. Okay. I said my bit. It didn't, it didn't go down with sort of roaring applause, so I'll, I'll shut up and see what anybody else thinks.
Well, Kevin, I'm sorry that, that things can't work out a little bit better. I think the, the board understood, and we believed in developing this whole CUP, that we would get this connectivity as part of the program. And I thought, I was hoping that last month when you were here, there was an opportunity to go out and do some sort of connectivity. I was hoping for more than a gravel road, but less than a full-blown sewer drainage, you know, specked-out road would allow us to get that connectivity and, and move forward. I think that's a minimum of what we can accept at this point in anticipation of this whole CUP development, and even though we're phasing it, phasing it so that it continues to work as a CUP, not as, as independent sites.
As part of this phase two, is the area north of the St. Obane entrance.
I don't think that mic has been working, or maybe it is now.
Is it? No?
No. Sorry.
The area north of the St. Obane entrance, where we wouldn't have to provide a connection. I don't, I don't really see what the difference is. If, if we were to build.
The industrials, space up there?
A 120,000 square foot warehouse or the small retail area that's also up on DW Highway, we would not be required to connect that to the apartments.
But that, but surely, Kevin, that warehouse, which we talked about, I think, before the CUP even came into existence, is not part of the CUP. And I mean.
That warehouse is part of the CUP. That warehouse right there.
Yeah, that's the one you originally had on the east side of St. Obane.
And the, and the small retail pod that we have up there.
Yeah. But can you really honestly tell me, and you're the property genius, I'm not, can you think that you're going to put that big box and that big box?
Well, that's a storage facility. It's not a retail, sorry.
Well, I mean, we could still put the small retail that's on the top right corner there. You know, we've got a, a similar four-unit pod up there in that top right corner that we could build, and we would not have to connect that.
Correct. Correct.
And that's why I question, why do we really need to connect it right now when we don't know what's going in between? You know, aside, aside from the cost, it's, it's the fact of having to move it, depending on what, what goes in there. Are we going to, and I've mentioned this at the last meeting, are we going to flip the buildings with the parking like we did for, for this portion of it? Are we going to put a bigger building in? Are we going to, is somebody going to come in with some whacked-out octagonal-shaped building with a courtyard in it? I don't, I don't know. You know, I don't.
But, but in any case, you keep implying that you'd have to pull out the entire 2,400 feet of road, and you'd only have to pull out or modify the piece around where somebody comes in with an octagonal building. I mean, I guess I'm having a hard time believing that you'd have to throw away the whole thing.
I wouldn't have to throw away the whole thing, no.
Right.
Or, or, I don't know. I mean, that section could be different, too. I, I don't, that's my point, is I don't know. It, it could sit where it is. There may be no changes.
And we don't either.
But I don't know. So.
Does anybody else want to offer any thoughts? Neil, Dan?
Yeah, my thoughts are, my thoughts are, is that it was part of the original agreement of the CUP, and that's what should be done. Just as clear as that. And, and I'm thinking about the other things that we discussed in some of the other meetings. You guys were hung up on this if applicable or as applicable. It didn't apply to the, to the final decision letter. In the final decision letter, it doesn't say anything about if applicable. What it does say is that the approval for the CUP requires both a pedestrian and vehicular connection. And that was, that was the way to everybody, even back in 2014. According to the minutes, the board was adamant about vehicular and pedestrian connectivity to make it integrated, and that's the intent of the, the CUP, mixed use, is to have that. And you also made a comment last time about, you know, to get that fifth building, all you have to do is put a hot dog stand at the end of the road. And if you put a hot dog stand at the end of the road, to me, you got to build a road to connect it, according to, according to what, you know, was accepted, so. I don't know, and I agree with Tom in regards to, you're going to be building these buildings all the way along the way, you're not going to be ripping up a whole 2,300-foot road, you're going to be tearing up a small section of it to connect what you may put in the way. So my opinion is, is that you, you follow through with the agreement of the CUP and you put a road in. I mean, that's just, and that's, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you, sir. Nelson, I saw you nodding. Does that mean you agree, or you want to add some further thought?
I agree, I agree with Neil on that point, exactly. I think that's always been the position of the board, that we have a CUP, which is an integrated plan, and I think we, we don't want to go away from that. We don't want to lose that.
Have you got anything down you want to add?
No, I, I agree with Nelson and Tom and, and Neil, all the comments. I mean, just absorbing it all, and I think we're, I'm, I'm ready to vote, if anybody else is.
Well, Chad, Kevin, have, have you, do you want us to proceed to a vote to refuse you, or do you want to go back and think about my, my stupid idea?
I don't think your idea is stupid. That, that idea's been floating at the top of my head for probably two years now.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please do.
It was, it's also been recommended, or suggested, that perhaps to come up with a happy medium would be is to just put in a driveway-type road without necessarily all the, the drainage or the other, you know, requirements to make it an actual road with curbing, curbing and whatnot. So if you were to propose an idea like that, I think I'd, I'd be willing to entertain that. Something, you know, sturdy for emergency vehicles, but also for residents to utilize to get back and forth to that area. I don't think that a gravel way is, is really the best way to go, and also, I don't think that just a pedestrian walkway is going to be something that would be desired in regards to that. I, I can't, that's a half a mile. I wouldn't want to walk to a restaurant or to any retail a half a mile unless you're going to be putting lights in and, and something for people to, you know, feel a little bit safer walking along the woods. So I don't think a pedestrian way really is the best way to do it, but I do think, you know, a driveway style would be something that we, I would consider as an acceptable compromise.
Thank you very much indeed. Before we go any further, I'm going to throw this matter open for the general public. Does anybody here in the audience want to offer any thoughts or to us? I think you, I don't think you need us, we need any help to deny what's going on, but if you've got some positive contribution, I think we'd certainly like to hear from you. I'm looking at you two ladies at the back, you're, because I know you, you have your views, but you're not wanting to. Well, thank you very much. I'm trying. Right, well, in that case, I'll close the public meeting, and I'm asking my colleagues to make some sort of decision or a vote, a proposal or something, so we can take this matter further? Or do we give it the, the option to the applicant and his, and his agent to go back and take some of these ideas and go forward? You, you're, as I see it, without guessing what my colleagues are going to say, Kevin, you're really in the between either a dead no, or you've got to think again. Of course, I may be wrong. Everybody may rush to say, oh, we'll give them the amendment, but I don't think, yeah, 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 that's probably true. Your call.
Oh, we know we're not, we know we're not changing the development agreement, because.
You've got that.
It's pretty clear, right?
Yep.
If we do a change, like you discussed, we would have to come back in here for a ruling by the board to see if the change was significant enough to have to redo traffic and blah, blah, blah. That's kind of what we did when we came in.
I understand what you're saying. But if you've got the same elements, but shuffling them around, I suspect you'd probably get a fairly favorable hearing from this board.
Right, so I guess my, so my question is this, do we leave this open? I go back to the office, we discuss it, and maybe we do shift something down to the south end. In that way, that can be voted on by the board instead of having to re-advertise the change.
To my mind, that is, would be an alleluia decision, but that is my opinion. To my mind, that is, would be an alleluia decision, but that is my opinion. Is it the, what is the feeling of my colleagues?
Well, I'm not sure what he's proposing.
He's gonna go away and think and come back, he's gonna rejig the layout so that maybe he can accomplish what he's trying to do in this current phase without having to build a road, which really means moving.
Something over there.
It's gone down, it's ran out of, no, it hasn't. That has got to come up here.
Well, how does that impact the development agreement? In other words, we've got to look at the original...
I think something like that would be within the development agreement without needing an amendment. I mean, the amendment was requesting to avoid...
The reason the road has to be put in is because anything, any pieces have to be linked together. If that piece is to go up here, he could leave the bit of the road that's down here because it's not needed yet. At least, that's my understanding of the agreement. Obviously, I'd take advice from the Community Development Department, but...
I think that would also mean, provided that it has a secondary access for emergency access.
That goes without saying.
Okay. And would it still be integrated off of the DW Highway?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Would somebody like to make some sort of proposal to put the matter into abeyance or whatever word you'd like to use to give the applicant time to think rather than we vote no?
Well, what does he ask for tonight? He's asked us to review the, we're still on a request, working on a request to amend the CUP.
No, to amend the layout.
Well, that's what he's here for, continued review for consideration of amendment.
I think, I think what it would come down to, if I may, Mr. Chairman...
Please do.
We just respectfully request the continuance to your next meeting and give us an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Flatley and try to determine what, if any, options are on the table for us to reevaluate.
Thank you, Joe. That's exactly what, the word you just used was the word I was trying to get. Is everybody happy that if the applicants, we give the applicant a continuance to a date, to be notified to the Community Development Department?
It would be, it would be a date certain, but I think...
Do you want to give a date certain, say, the first week in March or something like that?
Second meeting in February is the 18th, am I right?
19th.
19th, sorry. And there's no town, town anything, no meet, all right. Go for it.
First meeting is the 5th?
Yes.
Yeah. But I think you wouldn't get your plans in here fast enough for the staff to look at them and for us to think about it. So, if you want February, you go for the 19th.
Submital for the 5th, I believe, is the 29th, which is next week, I think.
There isn't any more... No, it's gonna be the 19th.
Final date, yeah.
19th of February.
Well, right, she was saying for the 5th.
What's the drop dead date for getting information in? For the 19th of February?
One, two, three weeks in advance.
Well, it's the 22nd today. It can't be next week.
For the 19th?
Yeah.
I think that would typically be if it's noticed, if it has to be noticed.
I would've said you'd have, you've got till...
Till the 5th or the 12th.
The 12th.
The 12th, to the 12th of February to get the information for a presentation on the 19th. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Can somebody make a motion to that effect?
I didn't hear what you finally agreed to.
Move to continue to the 19th of February meeting.
Continuance to the 19th of February with the understanding that the applicant puts documents into the Community Development by the 12th of February.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. All in favor?
With no further notice to a budger.
With no further notice to a budger, of course. I'm at 7:00 PM in this room.
In this room. Right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, folks. I'm sorry. I hope that works with you, Mr. Manuelli. You're gonna get more involved again, I'm afraid. But you've got nothing better to do except fight a few fires, you know.
Okay. Item seven on our agenda is RCL. Realty LLC is the applicant and owner conceptual discussion of a series of potential lot mergers that would merge nine existing lots of record into five lots. The parcels are located at 21 Elizabeth Drive, 19 Elizabeth Drive, 17 Elizabeth Drive, 15 Elizabeth Drive, 11 Elizabeth Drive, 4 Squires Drive, and 14 Elizabeth Drive, 18 Elizabeth Drive, and 7 Charles Road in the R1 District and R2 Residential Districts. Tax map 3A Lot 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 25, 26, and 27. Case number, Planning Board 2019-3. Kelly, is there anything that we need to hear, need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just that this is a conceptual discussion, so if you could please provide any recommendations or feedback as needed.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Please introduce yourself again and tell us what we got for a proposal.
Good evening, Board. Again, my name is Brent Cole with Keach Nordstrom Associates. To my left is Brett Allard with Bernstein Insure. He's filling in for Greg Michael on the project. He's the attorney. Yeah, so we are here, here tonight with a conceptual development for Normandy Estates. This project may not come in front of you formally because it's not really a subdivision. It's obviously not a site plan. Before you get some random merger documents in front of you, we figured we'd at least come here and get your concerns and your opinion on the project because we feel like that matters with the town. So, Normandy Estates, if you guys didn't read through the description, I'll go through the history of it a little bit. Back in 1970, Charles Road and Elizabeth Drive were built for a development called Normandy Estates. The developer built the good portions and left the tougher areas to sit. And so, they sat till about 1999 when Keach Nordstrom Associates partnered up with Steve Patterson and took on the rest of the development. That came with reconfiguring lots, extending town road, and ultimately was found to be approved by Mr. Nelson Disco at the time, the chair. That project was not feasible. It was obviously never built. The terrain was, again, too rough. Town road just didn't yield enough lots to provide a feasible project. So, we are back here in 2019 with what we feel is a solution. There are nine lots remaining. We plan on consolidating them down to five. Four of those lots will be proposed off of a shared driveway that follows Charles Road, Class 6 roadway currently, into the right-of-way that used to be, or that is Elizabeth Drive, and provide the four lots with a, with access to Elizabeth, or it may transfer over to Charles at that point. The fifth lot will have access off of Elizabeth, where we're proposing to build the town a turnaround. Currently, this area is rough for DPW. They plow the end of this and there's really no cul-de-sac or turnaround. They've been pushing excess gravel that they have out there to try to provide a stable base, but during the thaw and freeze season, they get stuck constantly. It's tough to turn around with any sort of plow truck. So, they've asked us to provide a stable turnaround that they've approved in order to gain access to this parcel. We have sat down with staff. Mr., the applicant, Rob Lavoy, is also in the crowd, if you guys have any questions for him as well. He's met with the town multiple times. We've met with the town with this project, gone over the driveway standards. That shared driveway will be brought to the fire standards, whatever Captain Manuelli requires. Town water will be brought down that shared driveway, and also the fifth parcel will have municipal water as well. And that's basically all I have. We're here to absorb any concerns and we'll make notes and we'll try to address everything. We do need to go to the zoning board of adjustment for multiple variances regarding frontage. Obviously, with a shared driveway, there's no actual frontage on a Class 5 road. The, four of these lots have zero frontage. I believe the fifth lot that I discussed off of Elizabeth will have a little bit because of our extension of a Class 5 road for that turnaround. But again, it'll be, it will not meet the 250 or 200, I believe, feet of frontage that is required in this, in this zone. So, it will require relief from the zoning board. And then, with success there, we'll be coming to you guys with some lot merger documents. So, with that said, any questions? Brett and I are here. Also, Rob Lavoy's out back.
Thank you, Brent. Let me compliment you at first. So, you've laid this out up here with the green and gold to kind of outline where the lots would be. And it is, in your visual there, it's a little bit clearer than the one we have with us on paper. But in both of them, you've done a real good job of making it clear what you're doing. I mean, we've had quite a few voluntary, small subdivisions or lot line adjustments and things where we just can't decipher what in the world is trying to be accomplished. And this is a really clear representation of what you've got going on. Now, you began by saying this may not come before us because, in essence, I guess now that you mentioned it, I'm looking at it and you've got four lots that are, that consist of the consolidation of two other lots in each of the four. And you could accomplish those by voluntary lot merger if you just wanted to make those lots consolidate. Is that what you meant by saying it might not be a planning board approval? Certainly is a choice in terms of how you could proceed if it fits all the regulations. I think that one of the challenges that you'll run into with that is probably the thing that we'll discuss here more than anything else. This gold-colored shared driveway that you've got in here is quite long and the part along Charles Road is, appears to be very steep. And the standard for a driveway is preferred 8%, will tolerate 10%. And I don't think that you're gonna get to 10% along that section of Charles Road very easily. Please talk to me more about what's going on there and whether you think that you can get to 10% and if you can, how?
So, I believe the second plan in this set shows grading.
Yep.
And that is a 10% driveway. We've told the town we will meet the town specs for driveway requirements. And I know you have that regulation that says you'll tolerate 10%. But that's, that's an issue with this project. I mean, it has been since 1970, is that, you know, town road standards just can't be met and it's even tough to get to driveway standards. We will try to hold 10% there and that's what we endeavor to do.
How long is that stretch of road along Charles before it makes the turn on to what would have been Elizabeth Drive? Because your elevations are showing 44 feet? An elevation change?
Around 300.
To 268. But actually, the far side of that driveway is 266 and...
You're about 410 feet. And what'd you say was?
Forty, yeah, something like 44 to 46 feet, over 410 feet. That's a little shy.
It's a little over 10%. But I believe the, you know, there's a curb out front. It may be a little bit longer than 410.
All right. So, the sidelines of those lots, though, one of them was marked 175, 3A 28 doesn't have its dimensions on it, but it's about the same as the other one. And that would be roughly 350 feet long along the edges of Lot 3A 27 and 3A 28.
I'm sorry, Chair. What'd you say?
There's a dimension along Charles Drive on 3A 27 that says 175.80 feet.
So, currently, this is a 10% grade. Between two contours, there's two feet. And we are showing 20 feet of horizontal distance between those two contours.
Hey?
Two over 20 would be 10%.
266 to 308.
You're showing 20 feet between two contours.
Just looking at the...
Okay. I get what you're saying. As I'm looking at that on the plan, though, what I'm comparing is the dimension along the sideline of that lot of 175 feet, 176 feet. And assuming that Lot 3A 28 is about the same size, that total of the length of both of those lots is something like 350 feet.
It's really hard to judge there, but from the top of that lot at 288 down to the 270 or something like that, you're talking about 18 feet of drop across 175 feet of length. So, it's roughly 10%.
Yeah, I mean, right on the 10%.
308?
There's no margin of error there. It's 10%.
Yeah. How long is the rest of the proposed driveway along Elizabeth Drive when it makes the turn?
Pretty long.
I'm sorry, what are you asking, how long this is? No. The new part, the shared driveway, yeah, from that corner on...
To the, to your T-turnaround.
470, 480. So, altogether, you're 800 and something, maybe 900 feet long of private driveway? Are you proposing some kind of homeowners association to manage the plowing and maintenance of that?
I don't know at this point whether there'd be a homeowners association.
Come on forward.
Rob Lavoy. There will be some type of an association. I've discussed it with Greg Michaels on it. What it's gonna pertain, I can't comment on at this time.
Okay. So, four of your eventual five lots are all joining off of this driveway and that funny-shaped one at the top, I think...
Please, sir, don't forget, please, sir, don't forget to sign the...
Yeah, sign in the...
You'll sign for it. Thank you.
I see water line drawn down the middle of the proposed driveway, but I thought that these, is there water service in this area from town?
Yes, there is water on Elizabeth. We'll tap into that main, continue down, provide a fire hydrant, and then services to the...
Where's your fire hydrant gonna go?
Currently, we're proposing right around 270.
Yeah, just say that, Mr. Chairman.
You'll see a note that says propose hydrant, valve, and reducer.
Okay. So, in addition to the roadway, you're gonna have 800-plus feet and some private hydrants and maintaining those and having them inspected and dealt with as private facilities?
I don't know if they'll be private at this, at this point. Merrimack Village may have Eastman's rights to access and maintain that system.
So, the hydrant systems are maintained by the fire department, though, when they're public. And I don't think that they'll want to come onto your private driveway to get to hydrant that they've got to maintain.
We have discussed this with the fire. I believe they wanted the turnaround so that fire trucks can turn around here. So, we built that turnaround at the end.
Yeah, no question, they want the turnaround.
To fire standards.
Yeah, they did. When there's a building on fire, they have to come there.
Right.
Well, they want to come on the private property to maintain the hydrant, though.
We'll discuss that with the town and maybe that could be a part of the homeowners association.
So, the lot that's at the end of the existing Elizabeth Drive with a little, that can be reached with a little bit of extension and a little bit of a turnaround, you are a little bit slopy right there on the front of that property. You've got a lot of contours that converge. Where's the driveway gonna go on that lot to be able to get 10% into the, to where the home site's gonna be?
This is, this is the Lot 15 you're talking about, the former lot?
3A, 14, future.
14, 15 combined.
Yes.
So, if you look on the main overview plan, you'll see two dashed lines that continue down through that flatter area and go to a portion of, portion of the land where the contours aren't so condensed. contours aren't so condensed. This is the more trouble parcel. But there'll be likely a walkout that will require some fill and we will try to tap into this less steep area.
So that's over, that's going to have an easement over 3A 17 to do that.
No, that's a, that's a, that's a platted road, if you will. Squire's Drive that they're going down the middle of.
Okay. Since it's never been built, it's just a paper street that's going to require the same kind of approval as Charles Road will be from town council to improve a Class 6 road or put a driveway in the bed of a Class 6 road?
Or discontinue it maybe, I don't know.
Yeah. If you're convinced that you're able to get the driveway at 10% or less, and certainly we'd love it to be 8%, I think that you're covering a lot of the hurdles that I see with the particular proposal. I don't know that it fits within a planning board function to consider it, but in, to the extent that the town council is interested in what the planning board thinks, a very, very long private driveway with four lots and water service within it, maintained by some form of agreement, is a recipe for the road not to get, for the driveway not to get maintained correctly and for the, there to eventually be some problems with that water and problems with the things going on. It's just, it's not, there's legal structures to do it, but they just don't work in practice. They end up...
In court.
In court or creating disaster or somebody won't pay or somebody left the association and nobody wants to be president anymore or... An endless, an endless source of those kinds of headaches. I wish there was a better solution for this than, than to deal with that much infrastructure that's got to be maintained on the back of really only four lots. I don't know what it would cost annually for them to keep the snow off of the road and all of that, but you could get where it's many dollars per month for the four lot owners to split between them for maintaining almost, you know, eight or 900 feet of roadway with water line and those kinds of assessments in them. Those get to be real challenging. And of course, if you build it as a private road, then you don't ever get the ability, you haven't built it up to the physical standards of a town road. You don't get the opportunity to come back later and change your mind and ask the town to accept it and to start taking care of it because none of it was built up to, to town road standards. If you did build it to town road standards and kept it as a private road, you would have the opportunity in the future to change your mind and propose that the town think about whether it wanted to accept the road and then maintain it. Of course, building it up to town standards is a very complicated thing on that, on that section. And I think if you could do that, you wouldn't be here asking for relief, correct? Comments by my colleagues? Anyone? Nelson?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think you've pretty well said it. I'm not very fond of this kind of a development in such a high, such rough terrain, let's put it that way. Very steep slopes everywhere. Even when you come to look at the individual lots and talk about building houses, you're going to have some difficulties to work with in terms of driveways, getting your 8% driveways in the individual lots is going to be very difficult, if not impossible. And also, I was concerned about the soils in this area. I understand they're Canton, supposedly that's a pretty good soil for onsite disposal, but that's a situation where you need some level ground, so it'd have to be some leveling and building. So it's a very difficult site to work and I, I don't think it's to the advantage of the town to build these kind of places. And then the town eventually gets stuck when people get stuck and they get into them and bad things happen. So I'm concerned about it. I'm not sure that those concerns translate into approvals or not, or disapprovals, but that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Nelson. Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, my only comment would be, I think the applicant, if he goes ahead, would be taking your points. Be very wise to build the road to town standards so that it could be taken over by the town as and when the, if you like, a local group fails to do the job. I feel strongly that to build a less than adequate road would be a recipe for a disaster. So my view is build it to town standards, get it so it's, the public works, accept what you're doing, and then see where you go. And if that works for you, then go ahead. If it doesn't, don't do it.
Anyone else have comments or questions?
No, I just, I don't see him being able to get it to town standards if 10% grade is not town standard. So they would be asking the town to take over something that doesn't even meet standards.
If it doesn't meet 10%, then it's, our town standards...
Well, I mean, it'd meet 10%.
But we will accept, we will accept 10 if we have to. I think they have to go back and see what they could do with the road. That is the be-all and end-all. If the road works and there's a chance it can be built to town standards, go for it. If it can't, I think you're in trouble.
I think there's also, when it comes to the design of the road, in addition to the 10%, there's also some particular requirements and dimensions for the level spot near the intersection as it joins the other town roads.
Oh, yeah.
So even a private driveway, you'd have to figure out, you know, the, the landing spot, whatever you call it.
Landing spot, yeah.
At the, at the beginning of those. As I was listening to Nelson's comments and then later Tom's, what I was thinking was, if this was in front of us as a, as a subdivision in a greenfield, I'd tell you not to do this. I'd tell you to lay it out differently, go rearrange it differently, that this doesn't, that this isn't a sensible way to subdivide this land, putting the roads where the, where the slopes are, are the steepest place on the whole property for this. I think that you're going to have, when you come off of Elizabeth Drive, down a very straight 400-foot, 40-plus-foot drop, any ice, any snow, man, you're just not going to stop.
You're not going to make that turn.
You're not going to stop at the bottom of that. And as a private driveway, who are you going to call when it, when it happens? I mean, your private snowplow developer, private, private snow contractor? Or maybe one of the people who lives here decides that they're going to do that for a little while until that falls by the wayside and then, you know, I think, I think that this is a real difficult site. I don't, I don't know what a better solution is for how you could arrange these things, but boy, there's, there's some challenges with dealing with that steep section of Charles Road. If this was a greenfield development in front of it, I would tell you to start over and do, do lots differently so the roads don't have to come straight down the hill like that. And I know that you can't start with a greenfield because several of the lots have already been sold and developed. In essence, that's what, that's the standard that we should apply is to treat it like a greenfield development and say, you know, would I approve this if this was in front of me from scratch? And of course, the whole Elizabeth Drive, the whole original subdivision from the 60s wouldn't be approved today by standard, so... If you think that you can engineer it, though, I mean, you're right to propose it. If you're doing it with, with four voluntary lot mergers that don't come before the planning board for subdivision approval, the only thing that you've got to accomplish is getting the town council to approve putting driveways or either discontinuing the Class 6 roads and deeding the property over or giving you permission to develop without them. And then obviously, the zoning board's got to give you all the relief to allow you to build with no frontage on a Class 5 or better road.
Mr. Chairman, what happens on the other side of Charles Road with map 3A lot 9-3? Does that have frontage somewhere else or is it counting on Charles Road for its frontage? Off to the right of your picture.
I do not know if that is a landlot parcel. Rob may know. I think you're talking about the southern one.
Yeah, yeah, the south side of...
Yeah. The town has requested that we continue the grade of Charles Road so that there's not a drop-off when you make the turn, so that Charles Road is accessible. I mean, it is a Class 6 road even though it's really a trail. So you can see that we continue the contours down past the roadway. I don't know if that is. I know Amherst Town Line is very close to that.
Right.
Rob may be able to help. That's all I can say is what he just said, yeah.
Okay. If you were going to take over Charles Road as a driveway or something like that and that other property has some legal aspects or legal access to that, you'd have to deal with that situation before you can get that to occur. Either discontinuing the road so that you could use it as a driveway or, or just deciding to make it a driveway. I mean, because that would limit what that person could ever eventually do as well, potentially.
You are right, yeah.
What's the proposed width of the driveway, the paved width?
So the, the Charles Road driveway is 16 feet wide right now.
So cars could pass theoretically. You have to allow that?
Other comments or questions?
And they would have to.
Is there anything else that you need us to provide you some feedback on or about?
We just wanted to absorb your concerns and we'll take it back, digest and see where we'll go from here.
Okay. So we did talk about the fact that you've got water supplied. Is there sewer here or are you going to do septics on site?
Private septics.
Any history of difficulty with the private septics on the existing lots? Because Nelson did point out the soil types and although Canton usually is a drained soil, when it's 8 to 15% very rocky, it may not be. Have you guys figured out where you would lay out your septics on these?
We have not gotten to that point yet, no. I don't know about any history of failed systems around this area. There are some flatter portions of each development as well as... Having a Canton soil, which is a decent soil type. I am pretty confident that will be, 100% confident that I wouldn't propose a lot that couldn't be septicated.
So obviously, that would be a concern, is making sure that you got those test pits done and that you tested and you know where you're going to put them and all of that. I think that you're inviting problems by trying to do five, it's not even really five lots because that lot at the top isn't going to participate in the maintenance of this extended driveway. So it's on its own maintaining its bit of driveway. And these other four lots are going to have to split the cost of all of that driveway and maintenance.
Would you like to see more lots? We thought, we thought it was a good thing taking it from nine down to five. Do you think keeping the configuration the way it is would be beneficial? I mean, I'm looking for input here, you know, to try to, try to help ease your concerns.
Yep. So the concerns are all with where the septics would be and would they work and dealing with the slope of the road and potentially even getting it up to town standards. The number of lots, if there were nine lots or eight lots at the end of this long driveway, I don't think that that would necessarily concern me as a bad thing, anyway. Especially if you could actually get the road to full town standards somehow.
Well, you know, obviously with more lots, there becomes more...
There's more financial ability to support some stuff.
You got it, yeah, you know, and that's, and that's where we kind of went down. We balanced that, we were providing the turnaround and that comes at a cost. And then obviously, these lots are not a premium lot. So it's not like you're going to be seeking the highest value here. So what makes it feasible for the applicant?
So your mergers basically turned one acre lots into two acre lots, roughly. They're, they're seem to be right at about an acre apiece.
Yep. We can go back to the drawing board here and, you know, really look at what the homeowners association costs would be and see if it'd be more enticing to add a couple lots so that we can upgrade some of the aspects that you guys are concerned about.
I, that has some pros and cons to it and I think it helps with dividing up the costs of that roadway maintenance among eight parties instead of four parties. And that may make it a little bit more economic. However, you've still got the challenge of making eight people get along forevermore. And they're not going to, I mean, they don't, they never do.
I mean, these type of developments are becoming more, you know, homeowners associations are becoming more popular, especially by a generation who doesn't want to plow and doesn't want to necessarily mow their lawn and stuff like that. So I do think homeowners associations are becoming, you know, they're a trend right now for sure.
They are, but when you look at condominiums, there's kind of a minimum size that it takes to have the momentum, to have professional staff working at it and collecting the fees and making sure everybody paid and arranging for the services. With eight lots, basically, you know, one of these, well, even four lots, one of these homeowners has got to take the bull by the horns and, and put themselves in charge and arrange for a plow guy and hear it from all the neighbors when the plow guy doesn't show up until a quarter past nine and, and, and deal with writing the checks and paying the bills and somebody won't pay their, their homeowner's fee. So where's the money going to come from for the plow guy because he's got to get paid next week? And maybe there's some saint that wants that job, but I can't imagine who would. And then what happens when that person says, well, I don't really want to do that anymore? And then everybody else in the neighborhood says, well, I didn't want to do it either. Let's call the town and see if they'll take over this road as a public road. When you've got a condo with 50 units in it, you hire a condo company and you've got enough money to do it. When you do a homeowners association, you don't have enough...
Critical mass.
Critical mass, it's a great, yeah, thank you, critical mass here to use any kind of professional services for those things. You know, which one of these guys wants to be the one that answers the call from the plow company that says, hey, you guys owe me my money this week? And there ain't any money in the bank. And he's going to go knocking on his neighbor's doors and say, you know, hey, Joe, you know, how about if you pay up your condo, not condo fees, your homeowners association fees? Boy, it's inviting a lot of headache, a lot of problem. I know that it's up to the buyers of these lots to sort of research these things and judge for themselves whether it makes sense to buy these. I can tell you, if I was ever in the market for a lot, nothing would make me run away faster than something like a eight, 10, four-person homeowners association. All that's going to do, you know, it has all of the potential for the problems of the big ones where somebody says, you know, you're flying your flag the wrong way. And, you know, we've got a rule that says you're not allowed to walk your dog in the road. And, you know, you'll have all of those headaches and none of the benefits of being collectively in a group.
You know, and the applicant will have to bear that, you know, he understands that these aren't, as I said before, these are premium. People are aware of the homeowners associations and the issues with them, so...
Well, they are, but the consumer isn't as sophisticated as the developer is or planning board or the attorneys are that are involved in these things. And ultimately, when the developer gets them all sold, he walks away. And it's two years from now or three years from now or five years from now when, you know, nobody wants to do this anymore or this private road, this 900-feet of private road have to get repaved. Probably $100,000 when that driveway needs to be replaced. I don't know, maybe it's 10 years, maybe it's 15 years. But I can guarantee you those four or five homeowners are going to lose their mind when they get faced with a 25 or 30, $40,000 per person assessment to fix their driveway. Or, you know, a water pipe leaks halfway down the thing and they say, you know, they call the MVD and the MVD says, not my problem. You know, these are, that's why these kinds of projects usually have a lot more lots in them where people can get that kind of professional leadership in these things. These are the kind of developments that, you know, all of us lawyers go and CLEs and watching people talk about busted developments and how they go wrong. This has all those hallmarks in it, you know? Enough, enough of the soapbox. Is there anything else I could help you out with or offer you up, some ideas or suggestions?
Any of your concerns?
Okay. Well, thank you for coming in as a conceptual and if you do come forward, we'll, and it requires our planning board approval, we'll see you then. And if it's, if it's, has an approach regulatorily that doesn't need planning board approval, you know...
Good luck.
Good luck with the zoning board and the town council.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, agenda. That brings us to item eight on our agenda. Underwood Engineers as the applicant and Merrimack Village District as the owner, although they're not really applicants. Non-binding public hearing under RSA 67454 to review a proposed water treatment facility. Parcels located at thirty-one Front Street in our residential I want industrial planned residential development overlay and aqua conservation districts in the wellhead protection area tax map five D two lot six. And this is planning board case two thousand nineteen dash four. Anything we need to know for you for the applicant?
Nope, just listed in the presentation.
Yeah, not really applicant, just for information purposes.
Presentation, yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry we weren't able to get word to you, but we would have allowed you to have the front spot on our agenda if we'd have known that you were here and ready, but at least nine o'clock isn't as late as I was fearing we might be. When you get all settled in and you're all set up, please introduce yourself and then tell us what's going on.
I made one comment about the last presentation, one thing you might wanna consider also with water service lines. Going uphill with the pressure, I don't know what the pressure is rising up.
They're going down.
He was going downhill.
Going down, okay, then he's all set then. I thought he was going up and, you know, I just.
That would have been interesting, yeah.
When they're going up. I don't need to stick my nose into something else.
No, thank you for the comment though. Yeah, if they were dealing with septic, we'd have to worry about pumping it back up that hill to get it out of there. But they don't have to deal with that at least, thank goodness.
Okay, my name is Peter Pitts, I work for Underwood Engineers. And we're working with the Merrimack Village District on constructing a PFAS water treatment plant on thirty-one Front Street.
If you wanna talk with the plan, use the handheld, so we can hear you so much better.
There you go, okay. So here's Front Street and the existing, right now there's existing driveway coming down in. There's an existing well number four right here and over here there's existing well number five, okay? Both of those wells have been contaminated by the PFAS from the St. Gobain site. So right now they're currently offline, but we're gonna be coming in, constructing a new treatment plant. It's gonna be, right now it's about thirty-four by eighty-six feet in size. We'll be demoing the well five building, taking that down. And the well four building right now, it is still gonna be left there, but there is a possibility that that one's also gonna be demoed.
So when you take the buildings down, does that mean the wells themselves are going away or just?
So the wells themselves, so right now the wells are inside the buildings, so, and right, so there's a on those types of pumps, you know, there's a pump on, the motor's up top, pumps down in the well, okay? So then if you get rid of the building, you had to turn it into more of a submersible pump. So then you're still, your pump and motor now would be down and you would install a pitless adapter about five feet, you know, six feet below grade. The water come up, go through the pitless adapter and out. So you can easily convert a well from the traditional, they call it turbine pump, when the motor's up top, to a submersible.
Okay. So that's what we're doing here is doing that?
We're definitely doing that for number five and number four we possibly doing that. So right now, so the road comes in, comes down into well five, there's sort of a turnaround right around well five, you know, that they can come in and come out. That turnaround probably right now is not big enough for a tanker truck. So the treatment vessels that are gonna be inside the building, they're gonna be twelve foot diameter, twenty-seven feet tall, okay? So then to get rid of the media, we're gonna need tanker trucks to come in there and to, you know, liquefy the media and then you can pump it out. And then you do the same thing, you liquefy some of the media and you put it back in there, the new media. So we're gonna need to get tanker trucks in there. So we're gonna be constructing a loop road coming around. So there is a partial road cut through there right now, but we're gonna slide it a little bit a little bit more north just to stay away from the property line. So you can see it's kind of a weird property line that comes down, cuts over and back. You know, this is town of Merrimack property and then that's the district's property, so. We're trying to stay away from going on to, that's just an old gravel pit out there right now. We're trying to stay away from that though, so we're just sliding the road slightly over to create the loop that they can get the tractor, you know, the tanker trucks around. So we're also gonna be coming out here, the sewer runs along down by the railroad tracks. So we're gonna be coming out with a line, coming up, it's just a little, right now it's a little, like sort of a woods road. We're gonna be coming up through there and coming up into the building, so.
What's the purpose of the sewer?
Sewer, so the one is gonna be a bathroom in there.
Oh, I see, personnel.
And then the second one is, and we haven't figured out if we're gonna use this option yet or not, is once you get the new media in there and you have to backwash it and clean some of the fines out. It's a green year activated carbon media, so it has some of the fines in there, so then you wanna get some of that stuff out to backwash it. So then we would send some of that down, you know, but then we're talking with the wastewater plant about accepting that. You know, then what's the quality of the water coming down? So the other option is we're looking at possibly doing an onsite lagoon, just an infiltration lagoon. So the backwash, we only need to do that once the media comes in and the media, you know, and we're doing testing on it right now to see how long the media's gonna last, but we estimate it's gonna be about a, you know, twelve, fifteen months, you know, between cycles.
So, say that again, you're backwashing the new media when it first comes in? You're not backwashing it after it's been used?
Yeah, because it's, once it's used, then it's used, then we have to get rid of it and bring in.
Say, yeah, backwashing it after it's been used will put the PFAS back out.
Yes, yes, yes. So, so the media, so some companies, so one of the manufacturers that we're talking to actually takes the media, brings it back and then they cook it. You know, they burn it right back off and then they turn around, they can bring it back to media again. So all the ones at disposal and we get some new GAC, so depends on what manufacturer, so that is all not exactly.
But that would be offsite anyway.
Yeah, and then if we did have a lagoon there, so backwashing the media, you would be, you have new media in there and then you would send in the raw water which has the PFAS in it. But as it's going through the new media, it's getting treated. So once it comes out the top, if you have some of the fines in it, it's already, it's treated water from the PFAS. And then, you know, then, you know, so that's, we're not really putting out any contaminated water into the ground. So we have onsite for other, you know, so the paved, the paved road comes down, stops around here. We would continue the paved up along the side. This slope here is gonna be ten percent slope up to the top. I believe it's ten, it's either eight or ten, I forget what, I think it is ten. Going up to the top there, that has gonna remain gravel up along here, that's what it is right now. So then on the site here, we'll also have some access on the sides, gravel on this side, paved on this side. So the fire has access, it freesides the building. Out behind the building is gonna be a generator and some LP tanks. And then we have an area out behind the building for potential addition of additional treatment. Depending upon, so the PFAS, I don't know if you, you probably all heard a lot about it being in Merrimack, but there's a, the PFAS is a large family of chemicals, so. And the state right now is just regulating a certain few of them and they could start to regulate more of them. And so some of the, what they call long chain ones, you know, they get treated with the GAC. Some of the short chain ones, they do not get treated with the GAC and they, they actually, they'll break through very quickly. So then you would need possibly, resin media is one that can do that, so that's an option. So we're designing the treatment plant such that we have options to go through the GAC first and then we have some pipes, you know, running out just dead ending for the potential addition of a resin unit out back. That is a possible addition out back. So that's about it in a nutshell. I don't know, do you wanna go about what's inside the building?
Um, no.
No.
Not in terms of the layout and the floor plan and all those kinds of things, but I am interested to know some of the specs of the treatment plant in terms of how much water it will treat per day or hour or whatever. I think that there's been discussion before about the cost of this project and how much of it St. Gobain is bearing, but saying those things in this venue would be useful too.
Yeah, so the treatment plant will be designed to pump, treat eight hundred and seventy gallons per minute. But the, we're not really, they would probably be pumping more you know, in the six fifty range or so.
What's the capacity of wells four and five?
Four is rated at two hundred and five is six twenty-five.
I'm sorry, two hundred and five to six twenty-five is the range?
Well, four is two hundred.
Okay.
And well five is six twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the two of them together could be eight something and you could filter that much if you chose to, but you probably wouldn't run them that full speed ahead.
Correct, we don't, we don't know exactly what will be, you know, what would be running them at right now.
Okay. This may not necessarily be an engineering question, but do you know what the cost of this installation is?
We do not have that cost yet. St. Gobain is paying for a certain amount and there's, you know, an agreement that there'll be the treatment system would be a GAC unit and they would be paying for a certain amount. I do not know what that is, so.
I remember in prior discussions, I don't remember if it was here or hearing them in, in before the town council or wherever else they might have been speaking, but some parts of this and perhaps like converting well five, as you talked about before, is not necessarily a treatment function and so the cost of whatever that is is not necessarily borne by St. Gobain.
There are some things that the district wants to do that St. Gobain will not pay for, yeah. I'm not exactly sure of that, but.
Somehow that dividing line was sorted out based on what's treatment and what isn't, I suppose?
I believe something like that. It was all done by the lawyers and then.
You mentioned a fair bit of this will be a gravel road and parts of it will be paved?
I'd say a little bit more paved than gravel, yeah. So the gravel portion would be, when you come down the road, there's this little sort of a T intersection, we wanna call it that. You know, from here over to the corner will be gravel.
Okay.
And then the remaining, we wanted that this ten percent, we wanted to make sure that that was paved, so if we had tanker trucks coming in there, especially during the winter, they can get up the hill so we can make sure that the plow trucks can plow right down to asphalt and give them a nice surface drive on it, so.
Does the MVD plow its own roads or does he use a contractor?
Yeah, I believe they do.
Parts of the road are gonna be ten percent?
Yeah, it looks like going in and going out.
That's what they were.
Yeah. Certainly you heard the discussion from the other applicant and concerns about the steepness at ten percent or above.
Well, all they can do is argue with themselves.
Well, then I assume that you're, no salt treatment on your site?
No, it's just pretty good.
Just spec not with wells four and five there.
No, but at a ten percent slope in the wintertime, it's easy to look at that, it's hard to maintain.
I mean.
That is a ten percent and currently their existing road down here.
Can you grab the microphone while you're doing that?
There's a ten percent road there and the existing road coming down here is just slightly steeper than ten percent.
Okay, and that's an existing road now that they use when they need to access the wells?
Correct.
So how does this, does this thing require personnel to be stationed here? Is this something that runs on its own and it gets checked on once in a while or?
That's exactly what it is, yeah. So somebody would come in daily basis, come in and do the rounds, you know, they, you know, check certain things if they need to do a little work, you know, there's chemicals that get injected, so they have to, you know, make sure that the day tanks are full and that type of thing, so.
Okay.
I'm guessing they would come in for, they did that already, you know, coming into wells four and five, they would visit those on a daily basis. You know, while they were running, obviously now they don't do that because they're not functioning. But they would come in there on a daily basis. They would probably, to check out those two sites, they would probably be there half an hour. They might be there, you know, at the new treatment plant, they might be there an hour or so.
So you're, since it's not staffed, your driveway's gated at the entrance from Front Street?
Yep, so one thing that you, we don't have on here yet, so yes, we're gonna drop back here, so we do have a gate here or we will be putting a gate at the entrance. We will be putting a gate down here going into the gravel pit area. And then what we're doing.
Is that a manual gate or some kind of an automatic gate that people electronically opens up for your vehicles when they come?
Manual to come up there and lock a swing, just a swing gate. And then down here, so currently there's a fence around each well for protection of it. So the one around well four, if the building remains, well, that'll still have fence around it if the building's there or not. Well number five and the treatment plant, we're gonna put a fence around the whole area. And then we'll have a double swing gate here and a double swing gate there. Actually probably not, not a swing gate, it actually be a, sorry.
Slide gate.
Slide gate. I'm not sure what, I'm gonna talk to, that's one of the things I wanna talk to Justin about, because sometimes the slide ones, if you have a bunch of buildup on snow on the side, they don't slide. So, so it could be the, you know, the swing gate, obviously. If you're gonna have the swing gate, you know, you would wanna, as you're coming in, you plow out, the swings are gonna be going towards wherever the plow's coming from. So, so that, that will be fenced all around. The generator and propane tanks will be included in that fenced in area.
They're gonna bury the propane tanks for those above ground?
We do not know yet. A lot of times with the larger generators, you need to have tanks buried just so you can get the liquefaction of the.
Propane liquefies better, below ground.
Yeah, because you gotta have the service area in the cold temperatures when you have that draw the generator.
There's no natural gas service around here?
There is natural gas. I looked around and, and so if you go.
Front Street, I thought.
Yeah, so if you go down Front Street and I'm not, I'm not familiar with the complexes, but like somewhere like over here, you can see.
In Island Pond Drive, they've just put in gas.
Yeah, I can see some of the regulators outside the building.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't see it any further than that. So the condos that are right across the street from this, they do not have gas.
That's right.
I, you know, looking at the back of it, I do not see any services going in.
Parker Village has gas.
Pardon me?
Parker Village is the one to the north of you that has gas.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Natural gas.
Yeah, obviously if you're able to pipe in the natural gas and you don't have to fill tanks and you can run your generators perpetually, they never run out.
Yeah.
Is this just a standby generator or is this regularly in use?
A standby generator, yeah.
And so how long will two tanks of propane make it run?
It could be a third one, you know, so we get a mechanical subcontractor that's inside those yet.
What's the design spec for how long you wanna be able to run your generator?
See if we have that. Well typically, you know, so typically you wanna, they have other facilities in town, so they, you know, so the chance of everybody going out or, you know, whatever.
No, I get it, but we've had some five, six day ice storms before.
Yep.
And people will like water?
I'm just flipping through our basis of design, I just wanna see if the.
Do you know what size the generator's gonna be?
We do not know that yet, so there, there's still size in those. It's gonna be at least a hundred KW, I believe.
Does the filtration system require electricity to operate or is it just for lights and?
Correct, yeah, the filtration system is really just, it's a pressure vessel, the water, just those sorts.
Presumably that'll run the pumps as well.
Pardon me?
The water pump, the well pumps and stuff will come off of that.
Well pumps are the ones that put the pressure to it.
They would run off the generator potentially, the well pumps?
Yeah.
All right. Don't need to worry, dig enough to much.
Yeah, I was just gonna say is that installing generators, I've come to find that like a twenty-two KW will run one of those larger tanks out in a week if they're continued use. So they consume. So they, they consume a lot of, lot of fuel.
What size tank are you talking about?
Uh, one of the torpedo ones, so I'd like a, um.
Two fifty or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, these are gonna be a thousand gallon tanks, so we're gonna have two to three thousand gallon tanks.
Right on, yeah.
Generator would be a lot bigger than twenty-two KW.
He said a hundred thousand, so, yeah, that's.
It's gonna be at least a hundred KW, I believe, yeah.
Right on, that's.
So we haven't gotten to that.
I commend you for doing natural gas and not storing diesel fuel.
Yeah.
Top of your water wells, yeah.
Let's say, yeah, let's have a diesel tank right here. Other comments or questions? Um, thank you for coming in and doing the presentation, I think it's helpful to have and to know about these things. I know that this was optional and we didn't have to have you come and do the presentation and I benefit from the information, but I also wanted to do it so that the folks at home get every chance they can to see what you guys are doing and what's up and going on with that, I think it's pretty important.
Yep.
I don't know, since you are associated with Underwood and Underwood engineers were part of the folks that were watching salt in our wells and kind of monitoring that, whether you have any knowledge about what's been going on with that or offer us any two cents?
I do not have any, uh, knowledge of that, yeah, sorry.
Okay. Um, if there's no other comments by other members of board, I really want to thank you for coming in, for hanging out till now nine thirty, um, to give us the presentation.
I was actually, I was expecting to be later.
Could I just ask one more question?
Yeah.
Where this, I'm looking at your property line across near Front Street and where the, your road comes in off Front, your driveway comes in off Front Street is not on your property until it gets almost to that intersection where you loop around. Is that just easement or, or who owns that property?
I am not sure who owns that one, it's actually a very funky, uh.
Yeah, I'm noticing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I have.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't looked into that, you know, I just, you know, they've been using it, I just kind of assumed that.
You must have some access across there, assuming that's somebody's property. It's probably, probably the towns, but who knows?
Because actually if you look at it here, you know, if we, we don't have anything going from this property, you know, cutting off of this town. That certainly could be a town, but it's a very strange.
How old is, uh, well four and five, how long have they been there?
Uh, I, I believe four was the fifties and well five was the sixties. I don't have that information, but it's, it's somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah, so wells in Merrimack built in the fifties and sixties were built for a town of four thousand people?
So this, I believe, I don't know all the history, but I believe that these wells were for a, a, a system that was a Reed's Ferry system that was separate and then, you know, the.
Then they were, they were merged or acquired or something, yeah.
Probably less than four thousand.
Yeah, so.
Oh, yeah, significantly less.
Well, it's interesting that they've got the capacity that they have, 'cause.
Yeah.
Eight hundred gallons a minute is more than you would need for that number, that small quantity of people. Very interesting stuff, so I assume that the wells have been periodically upgraded equipment wise and all that and we don't have the turbine pumps from nineteen fifty still in the ground?
I'm not sure exactly how often they were replaced, we're gonna have to replace the ones that are out there now because we're changing the head conditions, so now we have to pump through the treatment system, so we're putting additional, you know, head pressures, so they, you know, to get through that, you need additional, you know, additional head, so we'll.
How much pressure does it take to force the water through the filtration system?
The head loss on these. Head loss is fifteen PSI max.
How much?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
So were these wells ever the ones that were affected by any of the manganese or other issues that they've had with contaminants around them?
Uh, no, the, the ones that had the manganese, they ended up doing the treatment plan over on well seven and eight, that's over on, uh, all aside. Out behind the old.
PC connection.
Yeah, yeah, the pie building, the Apple Pie building, yeah.
And where they've done a lot of work on that now.
That was actually nice, 'cause that, that went online and about a month later, these had to get taken offline, so that plant came on just at the right time, so.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you for the presentation, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, very interesting. Okay, uh, agenda, uh, but let me share your mind.
Okay, we are up to discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any, uh, discussion items for tonight? Neil?
Yeah, let me just find it. I just had a, a couple of questions. Uh, well, one thing that I wanted to just bring up was the, um, the walkway in front of vaults and.
In front of what?
Vaults.
Vaults.
Uh, motor storage. It seems as though it's been a, in the past, it was a, a topic about snow removal along the walkway in the front edge of the building and going by the, and, and not putting in a, a permanent sidewalk. Uh, there was a concern that maybe it wouldn't be cleared or there's a possibility of cars parking on it and whatnot. And, um, going by there today, there was a portion of the frontage that wasn't, um, taken care of, so there was snow going across there. And coming down the DW highway, you get the sidewalks that are clear and then you get his spot where it's not clear. Um, the, the main portion in front of the building was clear, but, um, there's still that gravel section, um, to the, uh, north, the north part of the, um, driveway that just isn't getting cleared with snow. And I didn't know if, if that should be something we address or, or what the deal is with that or if it is being addressed because, um, past discussions it has, it's been a topic. When they came to the, uh, board to present their, um, potential new building, that was a major concern, was making sure we had the sidewalks. And they're not keeping them clear, I have countless photos of stuff being parked across the painted area that was designated as a walkway. Um, and now I'm, I'm noticing that the, the other portion is not being cleared, uh, or snow's not being removed. And I just didn't know if it was something that we should address or how it should be addressed? Um, or if, i- if it's a concern at all with the, you know, the rest of the board?
I'll offer my own two cents.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think that anytime that we've asked an applicant or an applicant's promise to do something and we observe that they're not doing it, board members should take note of that and observe it. That's my two cents worth, the, the, the technical part of the answer is that, uh, the service request forms that the department has is an appropriate vehicle to fill it out and, um, let them know what's going on, whether it's somebody whose sign isn't doing the right thing or they're not taking care of the snow or whatever, and then the department can, um, go take a look at it, compare it to what the file says and if necessary, write them a letter telling them to get it straight.
What exactly are you worried about?
What am I worried about?
Whereabouts on the?
Oh, uh, so, uh, there's two entries to the property, two driveways.
Yes.
One closer to Dunkin' Donuts, one further north by the, uh, new bus, um, sto- uh, bus company.
Yes.
The, the entrance towards the north by the bus company, they're not, it's not being maintained, this, the snow is not being removed on that gravel walkway that they put in.
Am I right in saying, am I not, Chairman, that, that is a town sidewalk? And under the peculiarities of New Hampshire state law, the town is responsible for clearing sidewalks.
If, if it were a town sidewalk, that would be the case, but that isn't the way we treated that property.
All right, okay.
The painted area of their main parking lot is privately maintained and that.
That's right, it is.
Crushed gravel bit between the north driveway and the north border of their property, um, is certainly their own. I don't know whether as a part of our approval of that when we allowed it, there was any discussion to say that they had to maintain it. Um, if it isn't stated, it's certainly implied since it's supposed to be a pedestrian way. But, uh, yeah, so service request is the right.
Would it have been anything to do with the wind that sort of covered it up again, all right?
Nelson's gonna tell us.
It was clear that it wasn't, uh, maintained at all.
No, no wind is blowing it on the town sidewalk. Nelson, is it on the same subject or a different discussion?
It's on the same subject, but there's two parts to this. There was an original approval that we gave them, which they were gonna maintain this sidewalk through the parking lot. They're gonna put stops so that cars wouldn't drive across it and it was gonna connect to the property next door, the old Summit Building, which is the, un, not the parking lot part of it, but the part that wove through the trees. Originally it was gonna go straight and then they wanted to, uh, they didn't want to cut the trees, so we let them move it and all of that was their maintenance. Subsequent to that, we approved an amendment to that plan, which called for the building of a whole nother building, which they now have to put the sidewalk out on the edge of the road in the town right of way, where it belonged in the first place. And they have to do that end to end and connect up to the Summit Building or the, uh, you know, that's the, uh, bus terminal there, uh, building.
Yeah, and if they build their building, and I, my understanding is the applicant's abandoned that plan?
He has abandoned it, then, then we ought to be able to enforce the original plan, which is.
Yeah, I agree.
To, uh, you know, put barriers in there and to put, uh, and to pave and to.
Pave it.
Pay, to pave it and to keep it clear in the wintertime. He took that responsibility as part of the approval, my understanding.
Absolutely, with respect to keeping it clear, the barriers along the driveway were part of several different discussions and I don't know if I'm mushing them all together in my mind or whether I know which one's which, but the file I'm sure says.
They didn't wind up on the final plan, let me see, my intent when they re-approved the plan was that there would be barriers, they never wound up on the plan that was signed, for whatever reason.
Okay, and my, my concern is just of public safety, that's the one little stretch there where people can't walk along the sidewalk and they're forced to walk in the road and driving by there today, I mean, there's not a lot of room to the roadway from, from where it is. And, um, so I, I wanted to bring it to the attention of the board and, and, you know, wanted to ask if there's anything. Well, you answered that question, how to proceed to maybe put a little note out there to, uh, say, clean your sidewalk.
Well, I can tell you from the sign game that I played, you have to fill out a form with the lot number, da-da-da-da-da, and what you've observed and what should be done, it's handed into community development, they send them the app, the owner of the site a note and that note then requires them to take action in so many days and then the department follows up on it. That's what I know, but you've got to fill the applicant the thing out, go on, am I right, Pat?
Yep, so the process, if you have a concern about a zoning or a site plan violation, is to fill out the service request form for our office, available online or physically at the office. You fill that out, you essentially say what your complaint is, property address, put your name on the form, is the person complaining, and we will pull the file, look at the site plan, go out to the site, see what's happening and.
Not necessarily a complaint, but more of a, an observation.
No, it's a complaint, it's a complaint, God, it's a complaint.
I guess my, my point is.
Seventeen damn sites for site, the signs.
My point is, is if you want the department to do something, to send a letter, we need to have that formal request.
Okay.
We can't do anything unless we get a formal request.
Right.
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
I always want to encourage board members to be a little active with reporting these things because Joe Citizen isn't going to.
Right.
And if we're not kind of looking out for it, nearly anybody that's going to, and so I've never been shy about having the department put my name on things when, in terms of making a complaint of those things.
You don't have to put your home address and phone number on it.
Okay.
Um, I, I do have a little bit of advantage in that they fill out the forms for me, but that's, I guess, a chairman's privilege or something, 'cause all I've said is, Robert, can you get a service request done for me on that one or something?
Yeah, if you, I mean, if you want to call and say, hey, this is my complaint or observation, whatever.
Right, right.
Then we can write the form and we'll put your, we're still gonna put your name on it.
Sure, yeah, and I'd be fine with that.
We have, we don't have like a code enforcement officer, so we have to have an actual formal request for us to take some type of action. That's all, that's just the legality of it.
Okay, other, uh, general items of discussion tonight, Tom?
The, uh, budget hearing is tomorrow night for the town council to make any. Budget hearing is tomorrow night for the town council to make any final adjustments or changes. Um, I did try to bring up the NHMA membership dues before the council and, and see if I could get any traction there. The information I have is that dues would be about twenty-three thousand dollars to be a member and most departments seem to pan the idea of whether they get any value out of it or not. So it would seem that the majority of the value from the NHMA, um, is from a very few conferences, um, that we would go to and their legal fee, legal system and whatnot for advice for citizens and, and boards and whatnot, which are used mainly by the smaller communities. And we would be assessed based on the size of our community. Interestingly enough, they put a cap on the assessment at twenty-eight thousand. So Manchester, Nashville and Concord are paying the same, almost the same amount that we would end up paying, even though they're much larger communities and, but they have their own community development, their own legal systems and things as well. So I, I don't think that I've been successful in convincing the council that twenty-three thousand is a good number for us to be spending for the NHMA dues. Eileen is trying to see if she can get them to give us a, a special reint introductory price of maybe something down to seventeen thousand. There are counselors that still believe that's way too much money to spend for the NHMA, they're more than willing to spend that for the NRPC uh, because they feel like we get more value out of them for, um, the different programs with sidewalks and, and DW highway evaluations and all that kind of stuff. But if you have other ideas or arguments or if I'm just missing the vote on NHMA, now would be a good time to bring it up or send me something before tomorrow night at six thirty. So that I could have a little more ammunition to argue, but I know that, uh, there are some counselors that are just adamant that they're not gonna spend seventeen thousand at this point, doesn't mean we can't win the vote, but, um, it, it's not a slam dunk to try and get back into membership for NHMA. I, I guess I, I don't know that I can articulate clearly enough where that kind of value is coming out of it to, to this community.
There are classes too, which you didn't, which are available to, um, board members, uh, especially to new board members.
Yeah.
All kinds of procedures and how the whole system works and all of that, I think that would have value, but.
I think so, the question is the seventeen thousand member or the twenty-three thousand number, if we went with their standard dues structure the way it is presented now, that's what they would be charging us. Maybe for a year we could get a reduction and that would give us a chance to kind of re-acclimate and, and, and survey the town departments and see who all is using it and stuff like that. I thought maybe I had a chance with, uh, Pat Murphy using, uh, the NHMA for welfare things, but, because she's the chair of the Welfare Association or something like that, she gets access for no, no additional charge, so she does go to NHMA's welfare programs. So I can't use that as leverage, um, but, so, yeah, I know there are classes and I tried to explain that and, uh, it, it just didn't go very far with my ability to, to convince them at this stage. It, again, if you have further thoughts or more specific thoughts or you go home and, and dream about it tonight, send me an email. Let me know, but for tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Because I'm, well, I'm fairly confident we'll be finalizing the budget tomorrow night.
Thank you for, um, the effort at communicating that and also for bringing the information back to us. I, I know that the hope of the board is that we would be able to rejoin this association, have some access to their courses and maybe some of their, their information bank. And I know that this is not necessarily, this next comment is not necessarily helpful in that regard, but when we were looking at that House Bill one oh four about having a state-run land use appeals board, one of the things that I looked for was what is the municipal association had to say about this? Because the notion is that the municipal association is an advocate for towns and would take up the charge on this. And their response was, was, uh, one hundred percent neutral. They didn't, didn't take a position one way or another, um, they really didn't articulate a lot of the concerns that we had or that other peoples had. That bill, by the way, was, um, voted eighteen to nothing, inexpedient to legislate, I mean, it, it died a brutal death. Now, there's supposed to be some senate version that will be mechanically better, um, but produce the same functional idea of having a state appeals board and I don't know what. of having a state appeals board and I don't know what I'll think of that without having seen it. But, um, I didn't like the idea or the execution in 104, so... Um, but I was disappointed at the notion of the municipal association not really having a stronger position in that or being active in telling communities what it could be or what it might mean, um, especially if their role is serving the very small communities, 'cause small communities aren't really watching legislation and keeping up with it and they wouldn't even know until it was imposed upon them.
Imposed upon them, exactly.
That there's a potential for some changes to whether there's some local control in land use. So I know that that isn't a, a helpful endorsement of the municipal association, but as we think about what you get out of it, um, and we talk about how their legislative advocacy has some value, man, was I surprised. Thank you for bringing that up for us, Tom.
I did bring that, uh, House Bill 104 up before the council just to tell them what we had talked about here at the planning board. And, uh, some of our new state reps were in attendance at the meeting as well and they, um, so they probably had something to go back and, and think about and maybe were at least minorly instrumental in, in expedience to, uh, to legislate, vote.
Okay, other items of general discussion, concern? I always think of them right when the meeting ends, so I don't have any more. Um, the next thing on our agenda is the approval, the consideration of the approval of the minutes of January 8th, 2019. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as printed.
Second. A motion and a second to, uh, approve the minutes as printed. That was Dan with the second. Um, any discussion?
On, on page two, line 22 at the end, it's, my name is spelled without the I-N-G, it's just K-O-E-N-I-G. But it's second end is not supposed to be.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I missed that, sorry.
I missed it, sorry, sorry.
Quite all right, I tend to see those things when they jump out and pull that name, so... I may have missed them everywhere else.
I know, just don't let him get my name right wrong, so you're quite right, yeah.
Okay, so we've got a name correction. Any other corrections to these minutes?
No, I didn't have anything else.
All in favor of approving them with the one correction, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Six zero zero to approve the minutes, that concludes the items on our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Sir's second, second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstaining? Six zero zero to adjourn. Thank you very much for all of the work, don't forget to turn your microphones off.